One time, and that's going to be difficult to do given that we've now changed it once ourselves and now Margaret's got edits and they don't show the original because the version Margaret was commenting on, for example, had changed the section that's near and dear to my heart that did not show a track change to what we presented on the sixth.
So I just had an idea. We could take our version seven, not Margaret's, make that version eight that shows the track changes we did last week, and anything we want to accept from Margaret or do based on the comments we received from the council can go into that V8 where those represent the final, that document's going to be what's presented to the council and so we never accept anything in that document.
So did Margaret's version accept our changes? Is that what happened?
No.
Because I sent her a track change.
I don't think so. But what I'm saying is the track change versions that was sent to Margaret did not fully, at least when I opened it in Word, the section about my little thing about audible expressions had been changed to different wording at our meeting on the seventh that she was then working from. I didn't agree to that wording on the seventh, the way it's worded right now.
Oh, okay.
And so it doesn't show, aside from that issue, it doesn't any longer show what was presented to the council on the sixth for that wording. And what we need to figure out is how to show them what was on the sixth versus what we decide today, which could be what we decided last week, plus what Margaret said, plus what the other town councilor said. So we're really filling, we're adding three things to what we originally showed the council. And so I thought I understood what you said, Mandy Jo, about how to make that work, but I'm not sure I'm facile enough with all the different levels of accepting and rejecting changes that maybe I do know that. And Kathy's the one who's bravely taken on managing the document, so as long as the two of you understand it. But I don't, I understand that as a working document, we need to know here what changed between the sixth and the seventh, the seventh and, you know, what we decide today, but I don't think the council needs to see all those changes because they're going to get completely confused because how are they going to be able to follow them? I mean, I couldn't find our version from the sixth anymore in the version that went to Margaret. So I'm confused. But if you think you two can work it out, that's awesome. It's a big load, I understand.
So I'm not sure what the suggestion is. Go back to the, it may be the public comment one, the public courtesy one is the only one I, Shalini had sent in a comment to us to add the word, you know, if it would be divisive or not. And I added those words because of the email. So that, I think that's the only change I made that wasn't the change when we were meeting as a group of four. Otherwise, they were changes and we did have to make change changes, as in when we'd done an option one and option two, we were deleting the choices anymore and just putting the one preferred one. And I think it would be too confusing to leave the old options in there, right?
Okay. I can understand that. And I understand what you just said about that one particular change. And so we can just revisit that one particular change, but then again, what Mandy Jo said, which version do you think we should work around?
We can either, I think Kathy, you can either just start with Margaret's and if we don't like her suggestions, we reject those changes, or we can start with the one we sent to Margaret before she put in and add in to that one anything we do. Those are the two options. And relabel whatever that is, V8.
Right. So right now, I have saved this on my computer as the seven with PB and MN comments in it, you know, so I didn't change it to an eight yet. So whatever we end up doing will become an eight. Is that what you're thinking? Okay. And so this one in track changes very clearly shows a Margaret change and it doesn't identify the other changes as a group change because it was just the group changing it. But I think now when we make changes, it'll be, I'm used to word always saying, "Who made the change?", but it didn't show that I made the change while doing it. So we'll just, it will be in track changes though. Okay.
So do we still feel like we are going to be able to, based on that, get a version that will show people who aren't us what changed from the sixth, not what changed from the seventh and not what changed since Margaret?
Yes.
It'll be changed from this, it'll look like that to them.
Yes, it will.
It'll look like one set of changes.
And for, if I'm going to do these changes as we go along, someone is going to have to be reading along the PDF because the, they were nicely organized, if people look through them, the PDF was nicely organized with following from the beginning to the end, a bunch of different people's comments. And then at the end, one person, one additional person sends in some very thoughtful comments that again go beginning to the end, but they're not organized. So someone's got to look at those.
The PDF is not completely front to back. It's multiple front to backs.
Right. So people have to kind of look down at the bottom and at the beginning as we're going through with another edit because some of them were questions, some of them were suggested word changes, some of them were, you could delete this whole section altogether kinds of comments. So I can't, I basically can't do both because I can't have two documents open at the same time, one in Adobe and one in Word.
So I do think it makes sense then, unfortunately, as laborious as it will be, is that we will basically have to go through and use Margaret perhaps as our jumping off point since she has so many comments. I mean, not only the document itself, but to look at every place she made a change and then switch over, all of us, not you having to Kathy, look at the PDF and go, was there something about 1.5? Okay. Yes, there was something about 1.5.
That's exactly right there. I'm just saying somebody else's eyes have to be doing PDF while we're doing.
I've got them both up on my computer. So I just split my screen so I can see them both at the same time.
Great.
Your eyes are young enough that you can see that kind of font, which is teary.
I could read them both. I can see them both.
So just for minutes clarification?
I am ready, yeah.
Just for the minutes clarification, the two documents we're working out of our Margaret's version and what is the second one?
The other one is a PDF version where she took comments from separate councilors, redacted them, and provided it to us.
When you, when you eventually do the minutes with the list of documents used, Shalini, you'll be able to just pull the two titles from our SharePoint.
You didn't open in Word. You can open in Word.
Yeah, you gotta do the next step, which is right there, yeah. Where it said, "Open in Word."
When you open, your machine's going to look at this when you do review, every comment is sitting there.
Okay. Does it name the document as it says?
You'll want to make that bigger. You'll want to make that, this longer because one of these has my initials at the end and you don't want that one. You want the one with Margaret's initial, that doesn't sit. So you're looking for, you need to stretch this so that you can see it.
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, scroll back up to the top of this section and then make this section go up so that you're at like A here.
Oh, okay.
I know it's dumb. I don't know why it doesn't let you do that. And you need to go up to modify it, pull that over like you're in an Excel. Go a little bit to the left, see where it has the little line there.
Oh, I can even.
Now, stretch that over. And now you can see that most of our folders are short names, but then now scroll down.
Oh, okay.
And, oh, look, you still get it down. Okay. It should be, it's this one or this one. The one that says Alyssa that's five minutes ago is not the one you want. The one that says Alyssa six, yeah, six o'clock yesterday is the one you want because that's the one with Margaret's comments. See how you can see it right there?
Oh, I have that one.
Good. So pop that open and then.
I need this one, right?
Or she can go over to the double dots and just download it. I mean, whatever you want to do, but you've got to get it.
You have choices, but you have to get it, you have to get it out of Microsoft Online to Word kind of thing.
I have that one, don't I?
But now you need to hit the concept, "Open in Word." Hit that. And now you should be able to see what Kathy was telling you. You should be able to see with all of Margaret's comments. Yeah, oop, that's actually the one that also has my comments in it. But you can use that one if you want, or you can switch to the other one. This document is also in the SharePoint under Working Rules Documents. It's the only PDF that's not in our folder. Go all the way down.
This one?
That.
It is a flaw, a flaw, and we'll talk to IT, but when you just open in SharePoint, you can't see track changes. So it's a double step and it, I find it better to download to my computer. I have a lot more control than the Word Online, but.
Then you have to worry about it syncing so much. It's like it's there. You own it.
I am ready.
Okay. So you can ignore the ones that say Alyssa if you want because that's my notes for today. Okay. So in 1.1, Margaret made a suggestion to us in terms of a rewording within that first sentence, making it clear that since we're not the only elected public body, maybe we should be specifying that it's the elected legislative body. So whoever worked particularly hard on that paragraph, have thoughts about that.
I appreciate what she was referring to, that we have school committee and library trustees that are all elected representatives as well, but I was okay with just deleting the whole phrase as she suggested instead of rewording the phrase.
Which one are we on?
Preamble, 1.1. So right here, why is Margaret's comment not showing to you? Margaret's comment should be expanded. It is on my version.
It depends on what she's opening.
Even though she's open in Word, can you click on Margaret's name there and see what it says? Wow. That's really weird because I'm looking at the exact same document.
I looked through this whole thing and I saw many places where it just said Margaret, Nardletts, and it didn't say any comments.
That's maddening.
So I was like, oh, that's interesting.
First of all, if you'd sit your little box, you're going to make it bigger. See that little box up there? All right, it's sort of a little easier to read. And then are we in, go up in Review.
Yeah, is it showing full changes?
Do you go?
Oh, it's showing simple markup.
Don't show markup. Just go in here.
Go up one more.
Go to this little arrow.
What's this, simple? That's what you want.
There, see how you got it?
Oh, okay.
Magic.
All right. So that seems like that should have been the default.
You would think, right? That's weird.
It is in every word.
World I've ever worked in except for here. Unless someone, if someone saves it in simple, it simplifies it. It's.
So Margaret made two suggestions here. She said either change it to elected legislative body or take that phrase out altogether so that instead it just reads, "The Amherst Town Council commits."
I agree.
I think that's perfectly strong as it is.
I agree. Delete.
Another set of eyes, nice. And then that changes it from commit to commits.
Lynn has a comment.
Yes.
Are you also doing a redacted council comment?
Yes. Yes. Mandy's tracking those Lynn's, so we're going to try to any time. And any eyes will be helpful because on any of these, if there's a comment, we should be taking a look at it, making a decision.
Unfortunately, some people use page numbers, some people use rule numbers, and some people just said general things. So we're hopping around to try to make sure we capture it.
So just as the full draft scribe duty, what I'm going to do is, it shows up in track changes as a delete, and I'm going to delete her comment. Okay?
Yeah. Right. Right. Because you don't want the comment to show any. And then it changed commit to commits by changing that phrase too.
Yeah.
It did the whole thing.
I'm basically not doing anything because it's showing up in the track change change. So until we override or change, it will show up as changed.
Okay. So it's like an accept of her comment. Cool. And then the next one is 1.2 Purpose, which I don't think there's anything in the PDF about, which is the rules of procedure. She just reworded that a little bit to make it cleaner. These rules of procedure shall be observed as opposed to the rules of procedure that follow. So that seemed.
I thought these were good edits.
Yeah. Cleans it, makes it clearer. Sometimes we wrestled so hard with content that. We did have a suggestion in the, in the comments from the councilors that we add the concept of legislative session as a definition because we talk about legislative session in one place, but we've never, it doesn't talk about anyplace else and it's not really a term everybody knows. So is that something you want to craft, Mandy Jo, and have Kathy type in?
Can we do it right now?
Yeah.
And I've noticed they're in alpha order, so it'll become between the definition of counselor and MGL?
Yeah. So I think we can craft something from the Charter. So legislative session and then the word or the phrase legislative session. And since it'll have phrases now instead of just words, the, we should change the following words to the following words and phrases in the little top before Charter, which had been deleted since there weren't any phrases. So unless another meaning is clearly apparent from the manner in which the word or phrase is used, the following words or phrases used shall have the following meanings. We didn't have any phrases, so we got rid of that. But now we'll have a phrase. So legislative session, colon, the word, the phrase legislative session shall mean the period of time during, I don't know, beginning on the first Monday in January following the regular town election, except when the first Monday falls on a legal holiday. I'm seriously reading from section 2.1B, which is term of office, and we should just say the term beginning and then just copy that term, that sort of language. And I can read it slower, Kathy, if you'd like.
Yes. And I wouldn't mind it if you simplified it as you went, but unless you want to put perfect.
I'm not sure we can. I'm thinking, but so the word, the phrase legislative session shall mean the term that begins on the day town councilors are sworn in following the regular town election and ends when their successors have been sworn. Would that work?
I'm going to read back your second.
Me the last part and ends?
When their successors have been sworn. Charter just says sworn.
So now that we have the Charter words, much of this rules document is a slightly user-friendly version.
Okay, I'm going to read you, but she did actually just super edit it down, so.
Totally edited from the Charter.
So here is, it's, I have legislative session, colon, this phrase, so I don't have to repeat it, this phrase shall mean the term that begins on the day town councilors are sworn in following the election and ends when their successors have been sworn.
Say, following the regular town election. Put regular town in there. And for consistency, we actually should repeat the phrase legislative session because that's how we do it everywhere else in the document.
Good.
Can I put it in quotes?
Yeah.
I'm just going to read it back again. Legislative session, the phrase legislative session shall mean the term that begins on the day town councilors are sworn in following the regular town election and ends when their successors have been sworn. That's very clear. The then weird have been sworn, but I'll live with it.
We could add the word in. I was just reading directly from the Charter.
Add a word in if it makes it easier for people to understand. Please. Make it.
I shouldn't be humorous probably, but I think you swear at someone, so you're sworn or, you know.
I used to say so the clerk can swear, he can swear at the clerk.
Okay.
So you get sworn in.
Okay. Moving rapidly through our document.
We had a, 1.6 is the next one.
1.6 is the next one that we had questions about. And I thought we very purposefully were trying to follow some of the Charter's philosophy here, but we were not trying to do what Margaret said, which Margaret said, "Go ahead and follow it fully and do the 14 days publication." And that I thought we decided that that was an excessive way of approaching a change to the rules was to put up 14 days notice on the town bulletin board as though a change to the rules was a change to a bylaw or some other substantial measure. But we were trying to incorporate the two separate meetings part of it just so that if you missed it one time and, you know, give people more time to think about it.
So I'm missing the 14 day part, Alyssa. All I see is her having us read it to be more.
She's suggesting that the process in Charter section 2.10A be followed.
Do the whole process.
Which means the whole thing. And I'm like, yeah, no, that's not what we want to do.
You know, this was double, we fixed this compared to what we, we had already, when we presented it to the council, it was to be voted on at two separate things and we...
Changed it to read.
Read at, I guess before we, well, anyway, because I'm not seeing our own track changes, but was that the comment we got from councillor? Did we have to vote on it twice, Mandy?
So the comment from the councillor was that the rule felt unnecessary completely. It seems, and then it says, what the comment said was, "This rule feels unnecessary. It seems like it would be better treated like a bylaw change, read and discussed at two meetings before being voted on, but I'm not clear why it needs to be voted twice at two separate meetings." So that comment tracks with the change we already made.
Okay. So I think she made an edit. We made this edit already. Why does it not show that we got rid of the two votes? But I don't.
I wonder if she accepted a change that deleted the two votes.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
So I'm fine with the wording as it is right here in this edit, if people are fine with it.
So assuming we're seeing the same edit, I see, prior to final passage, proposed amendment shall be read at two separate meetings of the council. Is that the wording?
Yeah, that's the wording I said.
And I think we agreed that was the wording we wanted and we appreciate Margaret's input on this one, but that's not what we were looking for. Because we don't want to do the full bylaw.
No, that is what I'm looking at. So the question I have is, should I, I won't do that right now, but should I figure out how to show that we used to say voted on twice? Because that seems to have disappeared from what we, it's what we show people. I can fix it up later.
Yeah.
It might be nice, but I'm not sure it's absolutely necessary.
Okay. So then I'm deleting her comment, leaving her wording, and we're moving on.
Yes, so it clearly, some council, we had that comment that some councilors thought that was confusing. And so, yeah, the, she must have accepted a change, right? Because I am bringing up the version that we gave to council and Kathy's exactly right that that's wording we subsequently fixed, but not the very first thing we gave to them on the sixth.
And what I'm seeing, once I delete her comment, is this is in yellow.
So we've not highlighted it?
Should I leave the highlight in because we've changed it?
I don't think we should do any highlighting this time.
Okay, should I just remove? Okay, so I'm not going to do that right now, but I'm going to remove highlighting later. Okay? So whenever I see it.
So does it make sense to you, Kathy, that this is what Margaret must have been working from? Because isn't this what we gave? Isn't this what we gave the council? And then we changed it?
No, Margaret wasn't working from that. She was working from the edit that I sent her.
That we made on the seventh.
That we made.
That's when we changed it.
You know, and that's when we, so I'm just, well, I can, as I said, I can fix, I know how to fix this. I could go back in and put our words and do a strikeout so we can show the original.
That's very thoughtful. Thank you.
You could just add the original in and then accept the original change and then accept it and then delete it.
You've got it. You know, I'll figure out how to get back to the original and then show the track change that changes it.
Word is just not the most cooperative animal sometimes.
Should we leave the highlighting for councilors to know that, follow the changes?
That's what I'm wondering. So do we?
But isn't that the point of a track changes document? We were showing them track changes already. We didn't give them a track changes document before. We gave them a highlighted document before with special yellow and blue color coding.
So now we're giving.
A track changes instead. To say, "You saw this before, now you're seeing this."
Okay. So just conscious of time, I am going to, after we finish as much as we can of getting through everything, which we have to, I will remove all yellow.
What did we plan for time today?
One. Just because we knew we might have a lot of feedback. So does that bring us to 2.1?
Yep.
And then I'm okay with Margaret's edit except for the fact that it shouldn't say members, it should say councilors. So she wrote, it originally said, "Councilors may nominate themselves." She added, "Other members or themselves." No, the word members doesn't belong here. It's, "Councilors may nominate other councilors or themselves." And then she added, "No second is required." I'm okay with that.
I think changing members to councilors is good. I think she missed the period after required. I can't totally tell, but I think it might not be there.
I think you are right. I get what she was trying to get at, but members isn't a term we're using.
Got it. And now we've got edits on the edits, but I think that's okay.
And did that, that's section.
2.2 is what we did last week.
When you see red, that's our changes?
It's blue in mine.
It's different color, it's different colors depending on how many times I open it, I swear. It's like sometimes it's purple and sometimes it's not.
Well, it will be, basically Margaret's color is one color and our color is another, whatever colors you're seeing.
They contrast.
So do we have any, Mandy, you're tracking as we go through, if we got councillor comments?
In section two, then the only comment is, it said on page four, but it's in the clerk of the council section, "Should the power of the clerk to appoint assistant clerks be recognized? It might be helpful that the role of anyone acting on the clerk's behalf be recognized and authorized."
I didn't exactly knew what that, know what that meant. I didn't know if he, that person, he, Mr. Steinberg, was trying to get at the idea of that, to be clear, that of course the clerk of the council then has her own power to say another person who's in, rather than that we have to vote on it. Because at town meeting, for example, if the town clerk couldn't be there at the beginning of the night, we'd have to say, "Tonight, our clerk is such and such person." And so he might be thinking about that because then it's like, "Oh, thank you so much for filling in for so and so." That was our old legislative process.
This comment came from, it didn't come from the town manager, Margaret, because that we're seeing there's in here. So I have no idea, you know, to me, it's fine for her to choose an alternative. Do we have to give her that power in our rules to allow it? It doesn't.
I think it's two parts. I think he's asking, do we have to give her the power? And I don't think so. I think we can just say, "She sends who she sends," and we just know that. And I think the other thing he's asking about is that actual vote we used to have to take at town meeting. And I don't see any reason why we'd have to do that under our Charter. That's like a town meeting thing. But it was a thing we used to do at town meeting when we had to substitute clerk.
So we don't have to do it. So it's our decision, we don't have to do anything here?
I think so. Because I.
Since Margaret didn't ask for it, it tends to make me think that.
She believes she has that authority already. Yeah.
That she assumes that's, you know, we appointed the clerk, the clerk performs duties. If the clerk can't be there, I mean, as president, do you see that differently, Lynn? If the clerk can't be there, should she, does she need to like do anything to say, "Somebody else is coming"?
I don't know. I don't think we should be.
I don't think we should be bound by previous rules of town meeting. I think this is fine.
Yeah. Because we might have a different clerk literally every time.
We could. It just means we'd have to go through this election. I can't see that as needed.
So, so within the clerk one, Margaret has raised the, do we mean three calendar days or do we mean three business days? That's in 23A2.
She raised that a couple times.
Yeah, the computation of time issue, which I thought we decided to use.
We were just going to assume the Charter computation of time applies. The question is, do we have to specifically say that?
I think it's very important to define what you mean, whether it's business or calendar.
Well, you don't do that, actually.
You can do that someplace else, wherever you say days. And whatever you want to not do it, do it, just say it differently. But otherwise, days will mean.
So if I may, there is no such thing as business days and not business days. There's computation of time, which is already in the Charter and which talks about holidays and not holidays. And it doesn't, the way we normally think, like business days, is not the way the Charter thinks.
So we could just mirror the Charter language, which is section 9.5. That section actually applies. That, that section actually replies, states in computing time under this charter. So we could say, in computing time under these rules.
Yeah, where can-
And then just copy it directly into a new 1.6 and move 1.6 to 1.7 right after definitions.
Yeah, because it's not really a definition.
It's not a definition, right.
It's an overall thing, like authority is, or like parliamentary procedure is.
We could just essentially-
Computation of time is a new rule.
Or, yeah.
That's fine, so, rather than, I mean, you could dictate it to me now, or we could-
It's five lines long, so why don't you just go to the charter? It's Charter Section 9.5, on page forty-nine, for easy, well, forty-nine of the whole-
You know, so here's a thing that I, when we were looking across other towns' rules, I found it very helpful to not have to be cross-referencing something to understand what a term is. And so in this case, if, you know, I understand, we don't know what a business day is, maybe. It used to, Mandy had suggested, and I liked it, simplifying it to days rather than forty-eight hours or thirty-eight hours or whatever. But it's, I think it's really useful for people to be able to see this sentence, rather than cross-reference, to say, are we, when we say two days, do we mean, if the meeting is Monday, is end of the day Friday okay, or is end of the day Saturday okay? When, when does what need to happen? So-
That's the purpose of computation of time.
I know, but if, if I see three days listed here, then I, as a human being, have to go back to a definition, say, when computing time, do the following. I still, you know, it's a lot of work for me to know what three days is. So I'm, I'm just saying, is there any way we could do it within here, and if the term business day doesn't work? And we ran into this only once since I've been serving, and it was, we couldn't easily post a, post a finance committee on a Thursday, because a Monday was a holiday. And so we didn't have the one extra day we thought we had for posting. You know, so it would have normally been fine, because it's a Tuesday meeting. And it became, uh-oh, you know, we don't have a three day before we post the meeting. You know, so I, I'm fine with doing this now, I just think, maybe we can think of later a way of just, to the clerk, but to all of us, you know, on committee. When is it that we have, do we have to get it in on a Wednesday, if the meeting is on a Monday? I'm just looking for something simple.
I really appreciate that, because the note I made was, yeah, we're going to use computation of time, because, right, we'll be standardized, but what does that actually mean?
Yeah.
And so, maybe, can we, can, if we made a new rule, like one point, a new 1.6-
Yeah, I'm totally agreeing with that.
So if we give an example, would that be like, totally outrageous, to give an example of that means? Because the other thing we have to keep in mind is, open meeting law counting of days is actually a completely separate concept from computation of time. Those are actually two different things.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with, so if we don't have to resolve this right now, my, my suggestion, so that we can get things that are a little bit more substantive, would be, do what we just decided. I'll plunk in 9.5. And between tomorrow and the meeting, or something, if someone comes up with one sentence that gets added somewhere, so everyone can understand what we mean, rather than cross-referencing and trying to figure out what the long paragraph means?
Because there are a couple different places we use that, and so we'd have to use it consistently.
Exactly, it's, it's not the, just the clerk.
Did we use anything greater than seven days in this set of rules? We do have a fourteen, don't we? Okay. Because if we didn't have anything greater than seven, we could shorten the definition and easily provide an example. But if we have something greater than seven, we'd need two examples.
Okay, so then, then let's, let's just go back and think about it a little bit, even if it's by the end of this time, because I can easily copy and paste a long paragraph in.
And then I would just delete her comment.
So we can put our creative thinking hats on for that.
Got it.
She's right, that's one of the most practical applications that people actually need. I have a question about formatting. So, in 2.2, we moved to the C rule four, C rule three, and in 2.3B, it just says, rule 2.1, rule five. What did we decide to do with the Cs? Like, C, S-E-E, C rule. And we have some that still have them and some that still don't, so I'm confused. What did we decide? Kathy, you're the arbiter of those things.
The way we did it, and you'll just have to show me where we didn't do it, but where, where we were referencing, if you will, we have a whole long thing on agenda, so you've got to go look over it. That's where it says C. Where it was, just, this is the rule, we didn't use the word C, so where am I missing a C?
So if you look at 2.2-
Yep.
And the president shall-
Yep.
And then it says, prepare agendas, and my version says C, underlined. And then if you, if you scroll down to 2.3, and you look at duties of the clerk, the council, item B, it says, B1, preside over the election of the president, and then it says rule, but it doesn't say C rule.
I just missed it.
Oh, well, that's okay, I just couldn't remember which way we went.
Three and four are the same. B, three and four, assist the president with public participation and provide minutes.
Okay.
But we decided to go, I couldn't, I honestly couldn't remember which way we went.
I think it was, if, if we, if we weren't expounding there, and there was another rule that expanded on what that requirements were, it got C in front of it. If it didn't, it didn't get C in front of it. So-
We'll just throw a bunch of Cs in, 2.3B.
Three B, yeah.
All right, then. It wasn't meant to be different, that is fine.
Section three had a lot of councillor comments. Rule three.
I want, I want to ask a question, actually, about this, before we get into each of those comments. So, just in terms of my recollection of our conversation before and after the meeting of the sixth. Under 3.2, regular council meetings, under E, and we went around about how to do the 10:00 p.m. thing, aside from the councillor comments, when did it become, meetings shall aim to end? I don't remember us ever using that.
That was, I think, placeholder language, because I was going to come up with new language, and I have three options for us today.
Okay. Because one of the things that, that I found, yeah, okay, so once we know that, all right.
So let's just start with-
So let's start at the beginning, 3.1, presiding officer, oh, that was one of Margaret's suggestions, too, is do we want to consistently say, we definitely don't want to see chair. But do we want to say, presiding officer or president? Do we want to, she did it both ways herself, actually. At one point, she said president or presiding officer, which one do we want?
We, we changed it last time to, and I may have missed some, to try to, later on, not just say the president, to say, or presiding officer, because it won't always be the president. In this very first time, we're saying, the president shall be the presiding officer, unless she's not, he's not there. So it, I didn't do it, but if I didn't catch it, we changed it, because we used to say chair, and we got rid of chairs, and put presiding officer wherever possible. So as we go through-
Okay.
You know, these are track changes in there where I tried to catch it. So I, what I remember is the first substantive comment on 3.1, and I actually agreed with it. Why should the chair of the finance committee be our second choice? Why not just go right a bit, right away to figure out who's queen, queen or king for the day?
Yeah. I've had that feeling all along, but never-
I assume somebody picked it up from somewhere else.
So I agree with it, and I, you know, there's no particular reason. I think we picked it up, a couple towns did it this way, and there's no reason to do it this way. So if everyone's fine, I'll just cross out and I'll say, second, the council shall elect a pro, you know, just change it. Is that okay?
Yep.
That's fine with me.
I still have a question after Kathy's done typing that.
That was the only PDF comment on 3.1.
So what, tell me again what the answer was, not, did we catch them all? Did we decide to go with the term of art, presiding officer, throughout, after this? Or do we decide to go with president or presiding officer as the term of art? Like the long phrase, which Margaret suggested at one point, or just presiding officer? I thought we went with presiding officer, but now I'm not sure.
I thought we went with just presiding officer, if it made sense.
If it makes sense, fine.
Yeah, you know, so certain things have to stay precedent, because it's the president's, not the presiding officer, it's a president thing.
Like appointments.
Like appointments or agenda setting. Like what's the order potentially, the change, if you're going to be able to change it, that might, but-
I think presiding, I think that works better, because it makes it clear that there's a difference.
When, when you were referencing committees, we really needed to change it, because in that committee section, yeah.
That's totally fine, I was just making sure I understood what our term of art was. Cool. And then the meeting thing is, should we, some of the feedback we got, especially since we just had the November thing, is item C, 3.2C. Instead of specifically calling out those months, should we say something more generically about our choices? Or are we trying to show people, we might only meet this often, so they don't be worried that we're not meeting very much? Or what's our goal here?
So can we start with A?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because there were comments, I think, on nearly every single point.
Yeah, no, I think we should just go in order.
So A was, consider amending 3.2A to add, quote, unless amended by a majority vote of the council.
Ah, right.
We discussed and realized, you know, and it was talking about November, the November change, so-
So, tell me-
The phrase, you know, A is-
Where do I put the phrase?
At the end, with the schedule adjusted as needed for holidays, comma, unless amended by a majority vote of the council.
And that actually kind of covers C then. So, so this is a means of making it easier to do that than amending the rules generally?
It makes it easier to say, we're typically meeting on the first and third, meaning twice. Unless we have to find another time, or we decide we're not going to meet twice a month. To me, it would be any of those changes.
Which means we could potentially delete C completely.
Yes, and I think we could get rid of then, the, in the months of July, August, and December, because as, one of the councillors' comments was correctly, that we decided to meet just once in November, because of this year's particularly, where the November dates fell, so we could take out the July, August, and December.
Well, we could just take C out altogether.
Yeah, just, I'm deleting C.
Just delete C.
Could you read back the end of A to us, Kathy? Because that sounded like it really covered everything.
So, regular council meetings, everything up until the schedule adjusted as needed for holidays. Now it says, comma, unless amended by a majority vote of the council.
That seems really good, because it's the council's decision then, and I think that does cover everything. That's great.
There was one comment that said, we could just say in 3.2A, with the schedule adjusted as needed, and get rid of the four holidays. And it was talking about 3C, the one that we just deleted, to go up there. I, I like the as holidays, because that's like, the automatic adjustment is for holidays, and then the council can vote beyond that.
I think it makes the public's expectations clearer, what they should figure. That's good, I like it.
And what is the yellow shaded on, aim to end at 10? Do, my suggestion is, unless, unless we, Mandy, you said you have a few ideas here?
I have a couple options.
Okay.
So, option one, I'm just going to read them all, and then we can discuss, would be, anytime after 10:00 p.m., a motion to adjourn shall be in order, even if agenda items have not been heard. Option two, meetings shall extend past 10:00 p.m. only if the council votes to extend the meeting. Option three, anytime after 10:00 p.m., upon objection by a councillor, the council shall affirmatively vote to continue the meeting.
Could you read number two again?
Sure. Meetings shall extend past 10:00 p.m. only if the council votes to extend the meeting.
And if we operated under that, someone would say, it's 10 o'clock, should we keep going? And we'd have to take a vote?
Is that how we perceive that?
Yeah.
I think that one's the clearest of the three.
And Lynn, any thought about how to, it's, we're trying to, well, clearly, what we're trying to do is say, we have a goal, if at all possible, of ending at 10, and we should at least take a breath at 10 o'clock to figure out if we keep going. And so how do we, to me, it's, it's the take a breath, are we going to keep going? And what I like to, I also like not bring up a brand-new topic, you know, like you wouldn't stop in the middle of a conversation, but you might not bring up another big item. So I wouldn't want to always have to stop at 10 and take a vote.
So that was the shall aim to end, but I, the more I think about this, the more I don't like it at all. And would delete the whole thing, because, you know, there was a comment about, if we're going to keep this in, we need to be stronger in the, the order of the agenda and allowing the president to change stuff. But what I was thinking about was, if the president doesn't know whether things will be extended, if there's an executive session scheduled, that executive session is going to be called at nine or 9:15 in the middle of a meeting, when there are people still here, and you're going to have to say, and we're coming back into regular session, and that's going to have to happen anytime an executive session is scheduled, because the president's going to have to guarantee that we can do the executive session prior to that 10:00 p.m. And that kind of hard, you know, puts the attendance of a meeting by the public in that weird spot of, oh, we're just going to go into this room for thirty, forty-five minutes, and then we're going to get back to potentially whatever you were really here for. I think it might really screw up the predictability for the public if we have a, you must affirmatively vote, because that would require the president to hedge on whether that will actually happen, and start moving agenda items around, which is less helpful to the public.
And I, I know it's logistically that issue, but trying to signal to ourselves and the rest of the world that we can't get our business done in three and a half hours. You know, that we would hope that we could get our business done in normal times in three and a half hours, but it may be longer, because that's what 10 o'clock is, it's three and a half hours from the time we started. So anyone who wants to sit with us, you can see, we keep people, we still have an audience usually at 10 or 10:15. They start, they're all gone pretty much by 11. You know, so that's, I think that the notion of this was just for ourselves also, can we try to be efficient with the use of our own time with a, in normal time expectation, we could do this without making it so rigid that we're ending a meeting before we're ended. So that's the only reason, and Mandy, deleting it altogether, you know, even if we said 10:30, it's four hours, you know, so it's something that says, do we need to, because we're, we don't, we're not thinking very well at the end of four hours. I mean, it's, it's not just efficient, but we, we're racing often, like I've been here long enough, you know, and sometimes we should be tabling things for the next, you know, saying, can we continue this? And people don't have that discipline right now to know how to end a meeting if we're not in the middle of a discussion. So that's the only thing of singling it, signaling it, without making it rigid, which is this weird, weird-
Right.
Weird phrasing right now, right?
Yes, and so, yeah, aim, aim is a little awkward for me, but I get not wanting to be as official as our previous legislative body was. Our previous legislative body had to affirmatively act to bring up something new, not in the middle of a conversation, right? We could be in the middle of a warrant article, and it could run till 10:15. But if it was 9:58, the body had to affirmatively act to move forward. I can understand not wanting to have to take that extra step every time, because it does derail things, right? Because you don't want to stop in the middle of a conversation. But I do think that the signaling part is important, and I disagree with the councillor who said that, oh, well, then we have to make it clear that the president can rearrange the agenda. It already says that in our agenda section, that the president can do that. And when it comes to executive session, if we're planning executive sessions for late at night, we're not making the best use of our time. Executive sessions should either be at the beginning- Executive sessions should either be at the beginning, in my opinion and experience, should either be at the beginning of a meeting, at an earlier meeting, or at the very end of a meeting where we tell the public we're not coming back, this middle of the thing. And so I don't want to try and get too ballaxed up in that when I think we need to depend on the president to have their, you know, to figure out what situation is on the ground tonight and how long things are taking. And as Kathy said, to be able to say, you know what, we have too much to do. We're going to put this one off. We're going to finish this one. We're going to work on this one another day so that people don't feel like everything, if it was on the agenda, it has to be done that night, whether we're here till midnight or not.
I guess my point was if you've got that in the rules that there has to be an affirmative vote, the agenda order will regularly switch around, especially if there's an executive session, and that's not really helpful to the public. And that's because it becomes no longer predictable. Maybe, oh, well, we need to make sure we get to appointments, so we're not going to do discussion first, we're going to do appointments first, even though you were here for discussion and appointments might take three, you know, it, it will kill the predictability of the agenda order, I think, if we require in the rules of vote.
We never had any predictability in our previous form of government, so I appreciate that concept, but the select board and town meeting were both free to choose to take things in whatever order they took them in, and the public understood that that was sometimes frustrating. And so I want to make sure we're balancing our ability to do our work is more important to me than that the public be able to predict what we're doing at 9:15.
Yours?
Well, this, the, the language that we have in there now that arguably isn't very good language, it doesn't require a vote.
Right.
I mean, we could, that, it makes it looser. It just tell, you know, it just says that we have the goal of ending at 10:00. Or we could say, we shall have a time check at 10:00 or something.
You know, and shall is the wrong word probably because it should strive or some.
You could maybe just get rid of shall completely. Meetings aim to end at, by 10:00 PM.
Yep, that, that's less, yes.
That, that's less likely to happen than not having a new agenda item. So I think that's more forceful or it's more specific. At least we can, we can accomplish that. Ending a meeting at 10:00 is not, it doesn't seem like a reachable goal.
So, Shalini, could you just restate, are you suggesting we add some other words in?
That was, what was your recommendation, that we don't add new agenda items after 10:00?
Ah, specifically addressing that point. I'm sorry, please, Lynn.
I could see, first of all, I, the 10 o'clock rule was a town meeting rule where they were going to either meet one or two days of that next, of that same week or the following Monday. We don't have that luxury, okay? We could, we could say, we'll be convening back here tomorrow at 6:30 and all of you'd shoot me. So I.
We couldn't without breaking open meeting law though.
Well, we posted a whole bunch of meetings.
Would have to post it ahead of time.
That's right. So the first, the earliest we could do would be whatever. Or I could say, you know, this agenda's so long, I'm now posting a meeting on Thursday for Tuesday night.
You could.
I don't think you want this, okay? And, and the reason I, and what I've tried to do since, you know, seeing this and I heard of, like all of you did, is to throw up that timeline. And then I see it going off track. The other piece I just want to point out, and that is usually executive sessions are something we can't delay, either because we don't want counselors to be caught off guard on something, or it is a time action that is sensitive and needs to be acted on in executive session so we can move forward publicly. So as much as I, I want to do whatever works to get our meetings over early, I like going home like anybody else, I want to make sure that we don't end up in some unreasonable situation with an, with the realization that sometimes we don't meet for two more weeks, sometimes we don't meet for three more weeks, we're trying to cut out an August meeting where we won't meet for a month, our 30 days, we'll meet within each month. So I just want to be careful what you do to yours, what we do to the council. Whatever you do, I'm going to comply by that.
So I just want to put in another plug for, I, it's water under the bridge, but I don't believe there's ever been an emergency where, or timely issue where we needed to have executive session in the middle except because that's when it was decided to do it. And so I think that's one of the confusion points, is I want to be able to let the public go home after executive session. And so that's something we can bear in mind for future and that we don't need to address in here because that's just like an informal conversation thing. And I appreciate not wanting to take the active vote, but, but yet I want to send some sort of signal. So I liked what you said about bringing up new items from the standpoint of guidance, like this is what you can expect, but there's always exceptions.
Does a new item constitute approval of the minutes? Does a new item constitute the town manager's report? Does a new item count, include the president's comments or other comments or counselors suggest, suggesting new stuff? Those are what we put at the end of the agenda.
Right, so right now we've got no link to items at all. Meetings aim to end by 10:00 unless the council otherwise determines we had deleted, no item may be brought forth, you know.
And let me just say, I think recently, for example, I think the town manager last time we met shortened what he might have said, and then two or three of us had questions.
Right.
That, of things we wanted him to state publicly because they were in his report. If we don't pass our minutes, we are hearing it from the public and that's not okay either. And if I don't come back and say to you, oh, and by the way, you know, I had approved this, three parking spots in front of a bank for three hours, then legally I haven't met the letter of the law. And the other, so I just want to be careful what we've done to ourselves and what the public, I like the signal, I just want to be careful.
Could it be discussion items? Like, all of these seem like routine minutes, town manager's report, and we may have questions, that's fine, but anything that involves brain power, a lot of it, that's hard for me.
So I think the problem is we would like to do this, but if we put in, you have to vote to continue, well, and, and that's not what's in there right now. But, but even brain power, we ran into this with committee reports. The committee reports were happening late and then multiple meetings later, there were counselors that were saying, well, I don't think that was reported on and we never heard. Well, it was, but it was done at 11:00 or 11:30 at night. So that requires brain power and suddenly then you're saying, well, we can't do, that's brain power and so we can't do that. You know, I, I, I'm to the point where I would just rather see nothing because, you know, I think we elect a president to set an agenda in an attempt to balance what can we, what needs to be heard at that meeting and be done at that meeting versus how long is that meeting going to be? And that is a balancing, an active massive balancing of what can be pushed off one meeting because you're looking at an agenda going, this is really long, but we can't push it off because that agenda's going to be even longer and so can we get it done this one? We don't want to shortchange our committee reports, you know, they can take a while. And I think as counselors, we might just have to recognize, at least at this beginning, we shouldn't have a hard time and we shouldn't have, this is what we're going to do and we're going to do this. It's good to have that goal, but the, unless the council otherwise determines, it's, I'd be more fine with, our goal is to end by 10:00, period. That doesn't, but then why is that a rule if there's no force to any of it? Like if we're just going to have, there's, if you're going to put a rule in, you should have force, but I don't, I'm less than likely the force because sometimes you just got to sit there until the business is done.
If, if the rule was left to say what it says, including unless counselors determine differently, it leaves open the door that, you know, someone on the council could say, you know, I move to adjourn, and someone else could say, I second that, and then someone could point out, you know, we have a couple of things here I think we really need to do and let's get those done and the person who, you know, and reason prevails and we get those done and we move on and adjourn. I do not mind having this statement in here, okay? I've been trying to aim towards that by showing you timing on stuff. In fact, as I looked at the agenda, proposed agenda for whatever, the 20th, 20th, I guess, I just moved yet one more thing around and set up trying another way of getting it done before we bring it to the full council for discussion because in this case, the discussion items aren't the big issue. The big issue's going to be the votes, including the rules, and the appointments. So I'm trying to look and balance the, what I'm thinking about, but, you know, it, it, I don't mind the rule being here the way it is. I don't like the idea of interrupting a meeting to take a vote to continue.
Okay, so, so this is general enough to allow for what I call taking a breath if we look up at the clock, you know?
When, when you say the way it is, which words are you referring to?
I think it's the one I just read. Meetings aim to end by 10:00 PM, comma, unless the council otherwise determines.
Yes. I don't need any more. It's a signal, it's loose.
Yeah, okay.
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 It sounds a little more like a rule.
Right. Right, I mean, I want to get back to just a moment, the idea of with force, because not, lots of things in here can't be enforced. So I, I noticed that in another counselor's comment, that, well, if you can't enforce it, then why is it a rule? Well, a lot of what we're setting up here is we're setting up expectations. We can't enforce that we have a dialogue session. Like, we can just say we want to do things. And so I think this is a perfectly fine thing to leave it open like that while it sends the signal to everyone.
Okay, I, I suggest we move to the next, 3.5.
Yes.
And Margaret's got, I think, some edits and some substantive, I'm not sure if there's others. It's on, 3.5A is the first one I see and the track changes.
She added, the council is participating remotely because, we talked a little bit about how to not mix together remote participation and not remote participation, but it's true that you have to say if there are any counselors participating.
This is fine, yeah.
So, sounds good. It's just that A2, that council is present, counselor is absent, and council is participating remotely.
Got it, and I've deleted the comment on that we have to have it. So is there anything else in 3.5, in counselor comments?
Um, yeah, mostly in B, 3.5B, about record of votes and, or two or what, I, I think we renumbered, so, so I'm, I'm trying to, one of them, I'll, I'll just read the ones I can find. Requiring draft minutes to be completed within four days of a meeting is unreasonable for council meetings and for committees. The clerk has other duties and people taking minutes for committees. Now often counselors are already finding it a challenge, challenging to manage their time. See my second general comment above. The second general comment was, the rules should not add responsibilities or make service more complicated, rather they should be developed with the goal of making our work more efficient. And another comment on 3.52 or B, I think part B is a great aspiration but is an unreasonable burden on our clerk of the council and should be removed. Part A seems more reasonable, though I would provide the clerk a bit more flexibility in suggesting extending the timeframe from a day after to two days after a meeting. So that must have been the votes. And another one said, council meetings, record of votes, two days after the meetings and final minutes posted one week after the meeting was the other comment on this section about votes and minutes.
I want to just make a real quick comment on that final minutes thing, which I think, again, shows a fundamental misunderstanding of what we're talking about, just as came up at council on the sixth, is that we've got different varieties of minutes. There's no reason why final minutes that we voted on, on a particular council night, wouldn't be up the next day. That's not, that doesn't make any sense to say it takes a week to put those up. It's the draft minutes and the votes that we've been focusing on here in terms of getting information back out to the public. And the gap that I see here, I think, is significant in that in the past, I don't know what they'll say Thursday night, but in the past, the division of open government, one of their theories about minutes has been that they presume that, which is false on their part, I think, that they presume that you will have the minutes ready from the previous meeting at your next meeting. The thing, the thing that, and so we're trying to at least make that, and I feel like Margaret's pushing it out even further to say, well, it might be from two meetings ago. And I, I totally appreciate the concept of having them ready for at least the next meeting, which is not to be confused with our desire to get things out to the public as well. But I find that minutes are far less useful to me if it was from what happened three meetings ago than if it's from the meeting that I'm walking into now, reminding me what happened at the meeting two weeks ago.
Okay, but we've got two related issues here.
At least, yeah.
No, we've got, no, because as, we link this also to committees. So the committees, when we talk about minutes with committees, we're, what, are cross-reference and we can decide whether we want to have, delete the cross-reference. The cross-reference would impose on committees what we're imposing on the council for its regular meetings.
We could definitely delete the cross-reference to 3.5B, the publication, and just cross-reference A, what they have to include.
And then Margaret is pointing out that the council meets more often than every two weeks. So we'd been thinking when we said at the next meeting that we're giving her two weeks because we've got all these times where there's a special meeting, we've called a meeting, we have a hearing, and it's clearly, we're not going to impose two-day turnarounds on this. So her suggestion, as I read the track changes, is to allow, she's striving to have 13 days as be the goal, you know, two weeks, which then would potentially work for committees. I'm finding, and this is just, I shouldn't probably make an aside comment, but on the committees I've been on, including ad hoc, the minutes are often available, but no one reads them in the committee or the chair gets them and others don't know they're there or they're posted on SharePoint and nobody knows to go look at them, you know? I mean, it's sort of like, some minute takers are being extremely prompt in committees. It's just the minutes languish. You know, the one with our goals ad hoc committee, Lynn, we actually had minutes for almost every meeting, we just hadn't moved them from draft to public, you know? We hadn't taken that step. So, so I don't mind the 14 days, you know, as, as within the, as a, because it's our clerk who's having to turn these around and she's been really good. If two meetings happen in the interim between our regular, we get a set of minutes for all of them. You know, we've been getting like the special hearing minutes and the other minutes. So I thought this was useful, her phrasing was useful. So I don't know whether it addresses the comments you got from the counselors, Mandy?
I think if we remove the cross-reference, we address the comments about counselors and council taking minutes themselves for the committees, the committee minutes, where we, we just need to be careful to cross-reference only the content of the minutes, not the publication of them. That'll address one of those comments.
Right, and, and she's done the, as counselors, we get them three days before, you know, we, before we have to approve them, we're getting them, which is a nice goal.
I, I would keep the B1 at one day. I know a lot of people are saying two. Margaret asked for two and counselor comments said, what about two? I found out last night that the town manager, by 7:15 the morning after a regular meeting, has out two people in town, employees in town, a summary of the meeting with actions for them to be taken. That, that also includes the votes we took. So I'm not sure why we're getting pushback on one business day after when someone's already creating a document that would comply with that if you just modify it a little bit and throw it up on the website. Beyond, that's not even the, just the piece of paper that records, that the clerk's recording the votes on. So I'm, I'm, I don't want to move from one day to two on A at all. I, I'm not sure where I stand on two and her added three.
So can we stay focused on that vote, that record of votes issue for a moment? Because I actually think that one's a little simpler in some respects since we moved to that one. So other thoughts on that? So, other thoughts on that? Because I thought this, this body was pretty clear on that in previous, and now we've read the comments. And how do we still feel about it and what you just found out?
I agree with what Mandy said, you know, I think we have that document, so as long as no one thinks they have to create a new document for this posting, it just can be headed "Record of Votes Taken Last Night" and post it.
I'd agree with that. Is there a problem if we're late at night, like sometimes ending at 12:00? Does that make a difference for the town manager to get this up?
Technically, I guess if we end at 12:30, the day after the meeting is Wednesday, not Tuesday.
Right.
So, so.
There are alternatives to going late. And let's be clear, I mean, that's the town manager's prerogative to have done that, right? We've had town managers do that, and we've had other town managers who didn't do that, and that's a great way of him communicating with staff. But it strikes me as nothing short of really bizarre that staff knows about our votes prior to the rest of the world knowing about our votes. There's no reason for staff to know that first. So, again, just like a modified version of his document, whether, and when somebody said it would be like a scribbled hand sheet, you know, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
I'm totally okay with that.
We don't care how pretty it is.
This, this leaves open what that record looks like. It can be a photocopy of the handwritten notes.
Right, it doesn't have to be anything fancy.
So then can we go to?
So that's the easy one.
Can we go to B2 then? B2, we've got a new B3 and a B2 modified that we at the council get, any minutes, I read this, is any minutes we're going to approve, we get to see it three days before, which I find great.
So, I question three, though, because, and the reason I do-
Yeah, I'm just staying on two.
Yeah, two, two still makes sense to me. I was just concerned about how it fit with three. Because three's nude language. And I think that, I think, you know, she's trying to get across what she explained to us in text about, but I think that we're being too focused on this crazy time of year when you have to have all these extra council meetings because of the budget. And I don't necessarily feel that it needs to be every special council meeting is also included in there.
I wonder if we just get rid of three, do four, and minutes of regular council meetings shall be approved by majority vote of the council at the next regular council meeting? Just start throwing in "regular" into some of these. Because regulars are regular.
I like that, yeah.
I, I think that-
Rather than trying to bollocks ourselves up over crazy stuff.
I think that takes care of it, you know, that-
Yeah, regular, I like that a lot.
Since Lynn has just told us we will run longer meetings rather than have extra meetings, we can count on, you know, but in general.
I think you can do two with, get rid of the word "next" and leave Margaret's added's in, prior to the-
Get rid of three.
-council meeting at which the minutes are to be approved, so it's not the next one, it's just, we're getting them three days prior to whenever they're being presented.
Ah, so took out the, between that and council, it's removed next, got it.
Yeah, and maybe delete three, her three, her added three, the 13 days. And then, minutes from, of regular council meetings shall be approved by majority vote of the council at the next regular council meeting.
And two was our compromise from our original, where we wanted to have it by the end of the business day, four days after the meeting, correct?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna need you to, so, one is as-is, number two is as-is?
Two, I think my suggestion is to read, "The council shall receive draft minutes no later than three days prior to the council meeting at which the minutes are to be approved."
Yes, the word "next."
And Mandy Jo, you didn't find out anything along those lines when you were getting information from the town manager or the clerk about their ability to get minutes out faster, did you?
I haven't asked about minutes out faster. I think that's a job for our president to ask.
And then, are we keeping minutes to be approved shall include minutes of all?
No, item three is just gone.
Delete it.
Yeah. And so the old item three, now item four, whatever it is.
Was the old item three. Minutes of regular council meetings shall be approved by majority vote of the council at the next regular council meeting. And then that just leaves special meetings up in the air for, we don't have a rule on when they get approved.
So we have one, two, and if it, once I fix the numbering, because it's doing four even though I deleted three, but, "Minutes of regular council meetings shall be approved by majority vote of the council at the next regular council meeting."
And so we're getting the minutes one day prior to what we would usually get them, correct?
You mean in comparison to current practice?
Right.
We have parts, this, Lynn. Record of votes is available to the public by close of business after the meeting. We get, the council shall receive draft minutes no later than three days prior to the council meeting at which the minutes are to be approved. And number three is, "Minutes of regular council meetings shall be approved by majority of vote of the council by the next regular council meeting." So it's making clear that we have, we're just talking about regular council meetings. In this expectation, at our next meeting, we're getting them before the next meeting, and we're, that's the meeting at which we're voting on them.
The, the only potential problem, which we should just watch for when we have two meetings in a row because of missed things two weeks in a row, we should just, you know, we can suspend the rules for those meetings, because that's gonna be really tough, but, when there aren't two weeks between meetings. But that doesn't happen too often.
Luckily.
So.
And, and just to clarify, I still haven't gotten this. Is there any change in, in two from what the current practice is?
Right now, you've been getting them, I think, on Friday?
So we would get it Wednesday instead of Friday.
We, we often don't get them before Friday, so.
This would be Wednesday, on our computation of time.
So it would, it would increase the amount of time.
It would increase the amount of time we have.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why this cross-reference, you'd have to understand that we're computing time, not in days of the week. So three days doesn't mean Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So, and what does-
Yeah, that's really helpful for me, because I actually, if I get them separately from this giant packet, I'm more likely to read them and do my minor, you know, sometimes minor or major. If I get them with 10 other things to read, I sometimes don't read them as carefully.
Yeah, and just for your information, I mean, we start at, we start with draft minutes, we, I, I have asked consistently that they send them to both me and Mandy Jo. Mandy Jo keeps some of the best written notes of meetings. And then after that review takes, then we send them out to all of you. So that by the time we get to the actual meeting, the meeting, the minutes that are posted have pretty been, have been scrubbed. So, that's my only concern. I do have a concern, though, I just wanna, this issue of posting draft minutes, is that still in here?
No, it's been removed.
No.
I would just like to, I, I remember that Mandy Jo mentioned at, I think, the last meeting, that, you know, a big purpose of the rule is for the benefit of the public as opposed to us. And so, two is really, you know, I think the other counselors are going to be fine with it because it's good for us. But, it, you know, it, it doesn't really answer the public's complaints about, they would like to have their minutes immediately. And, you know, the possibility of having draft minutes, actually, two does talk about draft minutes.
It's just, we get the draft minutes.
Yes.
You know, and I, I do think draft minutes, that undergo multiple drafts, is a difficult thing when it's minutes. So, you know, partial minutes going out to the public, and better minutes going out to the public when there's substantive. And in a few instances, counselors have given pretty substantive comments, you know, like you missed a whole section of a discussion, or you didn't capture it, and the clerk went back, watched the tapes, and expanded. So.
And I wanna make clear, Darcy, I hear you on that, I think we all hear you on that. And I think what we're trying to do, given the reality we're facing, as much as I like to say we need to be aspirational in these, is that if we can get it set so that at least we can see them ahead of time, so they're not just mixed in with the packet, which means that the process where they get them to the president and the vice president is gonna have to back up also. Because we're not talking about that in the rules, but given their current process, they're gonna have to back up their timeline as well. And so if we can consistently get to the point where we're getting them three days ahead and we're publishing those votes, we're doing the best we can at this moment to address the public's concerns. Maybe once we get more of this under our belt, like where we've been putting up the votes and we've been getting, we, the counselors have been getting things three days ahead, then we'll be able to reevaluate and say, okay, we got that structure in place. Now can we add another level to it of the public being able to see some form of draft minutes sooner? And I think that, but if without this, we like, we need to build this first and then continually ask ourselves what we can do to do better. So we're coming back to that someday. It's not gone away.
So we're up to, we're moving on? 3.8, 3.9?
The first, Margaret, is 3.8, and I know we had a lot of comments on this, on a, this seems like adding, you can read them out, Mandy, but I saw it was like, we're adding yet another way for the public to participate. It's already difficult to figure out what the difference between a hearing, a forum, a whatever is. And do we need to do this at all, was one of the questions, yeah.
That, that was one of the first ones, was for public dialogue, don't make a third type event, incorporate aspects of public dialogue into hearings and forums, public is confused enough. 3.9, and I'm just gonna take them all together. 3.9, I think this is a really interesting idea that could be useful, but I'm not sure why we need a whole new category of meeting to accomplish this. Could this not be a special meeting of the council? It feels somewhat similar to special meetings that are being called for finance and CRC throughout the month of May. There is 5.3, which is the corollary to the 3.8, public dialogue. This is a cool idea, but I'm not clear on how this adds any function utility that is not already covered by a public hearing forum or district meeting. Could this be duplicative of existing meeting formats? And if so, is it necessary? Someone else said, "I urge that we not adopt proposed rules 3.8 and 3.9 at this time. The requirements in the Charter for Public Hearings, Public Forums, and District Meetings are difficult to manage. Some counselors are experimenting with office hours. We can't yet assess the value of these public engagement efforts. It is too early in the council government to add more expectations." And proposed rule 5.3, that's the public dialogue, is another creation of a public engagement mechanism in addition to what the Charter requires. For the reasons stated above related to proposed rules 3.8 and 3.9, I urge that the council not adopt this one.
And just so, if those of us who are looking at the track change, Margaret didn't delete public dialogue, but softened it to, by majority vote, we might do one of these whenever we feel like it.
Right.
So, my thought on this was, well, let me go to work sessions first. I think, maybe at the May 20th meeting, we might spend a bit longer describing what these could be, and they're completely discretionary to us, that the notion is very different than a public forum or a public hearing. It's really, we're talking through a tough or complicated issue well before we're doing a vote, and we want others to sit at the table with us that we need there. And that might be, you know, I'm thinking some town staff there, there might be some people from the university, from the community, that we know have a lot of knowledge about this. And we're setting it up as a real, what I call a work session, you know, a gaining information, a study section, any name we wanted. So, it's different than the others. And from those comments, it, to me, it was clear, we, we hadn't accented the difference enough. You know, so, so that's all I was thinking on that one, that this is a useful thing for us to have in our bag of potential. The public dialogue, as we write in it, has to happen. So, I personally would be fine softening it. And that's a chat with the public, a conversation with them, you know, without as much of a scripted, a scripted dialogue. So, the district, and I'll stop after one more, five seconds. The district meeting we just had in District 1 was pretty close to a public dialogue. Mandy came, you know, people were bringing up issues of concern to them, and each person was giving each other ideas about how to go forward, so it wasn't formal.
I like the idea of softening the public dialogue per Margaret's recommendations to add our discretion, instead of forcing the two times a year now. And then that will give us some leeway, given that we're only in our first year of operation. I'm hesitant to remove them completely, despite it sounds like many counselors who don't like the idea of them being in here, because I think if we remove them, we forget about them.
Was that two or three counselors?
Three separate counselors made those comments, I read.
Okay, so they're outnumbered.
Wow, Darcy, way to count votes. Is that, but, but I, I do think that Kathy's point was extremely well-taken, which is that because we were explaining so many things, it was supremely obvious to us what the value of a work session was, but because there just felt like there were so many new things to the rest of the counselors, they couldn't, they, they couldn't perceive that difference. And so, when we do public dialogue, right, which, which is more like a forum and more like a district meeting, whereas work session is really a very different thing. Public dialogue is more like those things, but I've argued to individual counselors that it's different because it's not based on your district, and it's different because it's not based on, say, the master plan or the budget. And so, it is a different way of having a town-wide discussion about public dialogue. But, you know, given the, all the interest that was expressed here at this committee, I think it's fine, I do think it's important to leave it in as another kind of thing we could do. But then the "may" is it doesn't force it if we're not ready to do it this year. But we're reminded that, oh yeah, we might do it this way, rather than expecting different people to go to different district meetings. So I think in, as long as we just, we just update, right, 5.3, to also say "may," then we'd be fine with public dialogue, with the softening but not losing. And I'm desperate to not lose the work sessions because of all the reasons Kathy just stated, and I wanna make sure we're all clear. I don't know why Margaret would have added "in accordance with open meeting law," because that is a meaningless concept. What we were trying to say is that the work sessions were not just for counselors, that we understand it would have to be a posted meeting, minutes would have to be taken, et cetera. But we were also, so we didn't even address open meeting law, because we said they were open to the public with an opportunity to, because we wanna make it clear, it's not just a bunch of counselors sitting around deciding this work session with a university official or a town official. It's that the public is open to come to them, and they would be posted meetings. So I don't know why we would have to say "in accordance with open meeting law," except maybe she was thinking, like, district meetings aren't open meeting law?
Yeah, I, I think it was just to clarify that this is more formal than, say, a district meeting in terms of requirements for minutes and stuff.
So, in the interest of keeping going, I've changed 3.8 to, "The council may, by majority vote, schedule public dialogue sessions as it deems prudent," period, see rule blah blah, that we will then fix.
Oh, you did the prudent thing? Ooh.
Should I leave?
Be just as it seems necessary, or as necessary.
How about necessary?
Or not even as deemed, sessions as necessary.
Shalini likes prudent.
I would just shorten it, I just moved her whole sentence, the sentence, "May, by majority vote, schedule public dialogue sessions," period.
Oh, wait, did you say by majority vote?
Yes.
That's new, and that, in 3.8, it's new to 3.8.
Yeah.
So, but it's, so which one, how are we altering them to go together? So 5.3 and 3.8 go together.
So, we could just say 3.8 is, "The council may schedule public dialogue sessions," period.
Okay.
And then, at 5.3, we modify that similarly, and that's a majority vote or something. I'm not at 5.3 yet, so I can't see what the wording is. But we fix it when we get there.
All right, so we'll remember to come back to that.
So that's nice and short. And then, work sessions, her- And then work sessions, her, she had the second edit we were talking about. Should I just delete it in accordance with open meeting law? Do I reject?
I liked the addition to just make it clear that it's not so informal that it's a district meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as it means to everybody posting and minutes, then I'm fine with that meaning.
Okay.
That. And then she changed, "Purpose of a work session is to discuss." And then in which case, we have a double work sessions. Oh, so that last sentence needs to then say, "A work session." You know what I mean? It goes back and forth between work sessions and a work session, whatever.
She actually didn't edit it right. It, she put, if she puts is, and I have to say the purpose of, uh.
Thank you. I know, it's like grammar, grammar, we need to fix that. But where, whether there's singular session or...
Okay, can, I, I just want to keep us moving, because I think we're in agreement. We like this and we're keeping it, and I, I'm leaving Margaret's two edits.
So it's not to skip around?
Five.
Okay, so then we're moving to preparation of agenda, and I don't have any idea why she added, "In consultation with the clerk of the council," because I, that makes me nervous that the president's ability to prepare the agenda should not be limited by the clerk's schedule. So I don't know why you would say, "In consultation." It's not in the charter. It specifically isn't in the charter. It says, "Advice from councilors and the town manager," period.
I don't see any reason to have it added, so.
Yeah, I don't get it.
Uh, do we have agreement just that I don't accept?
I'm okay with that.
Skip. Good. And I marked under 4.2, how we already made clear that the, that the, in our first sentence there, that the presiding officer can shift things around, and that's fine.
So I think the question there was, do you call out the president specifically or just say, "Presiding officer"? Um, I think you might want to call the president out, because the president is the agenda setter, and they could set an agenda in, a posting that is not the right order, but might not be the presiding officer at the meeting. But there's probably still involved with the agenda setting for that meeting if they're not going to be at the meeting. So since the president has the specific agenda-setting authority, you're then, by keeping them both in, you're allowing when the president publishes the agenda, even if they're not going to preside at the meeting, it to be off kilter. And then whoever's presiding at the meeting can also switch it around if that's not the president.
Just catch me up to exactly where we are.
4.2. In that sentence, because we talked about, should we use president or presiding officer, or should we just use presiding officer, that this is a case where we should have both, I believe, Mandy just said.
Yeah, I think so. And actually, we have always had that, because there's no track changes in that one.
Then we're down to 4.3, which has a couple of comments. I think we should put president or presiding officer into that too, because it is both in agenda setting, but also potentially during the meeting.
And I disagree with Margaret's comment to change it to May, because I thought we were very specific here that we wanted it to be shall.
So we have a couple of comments from councilors, and I will read them. Proposed rule 4.3 requires public comments on matters that are new to the council and likely new to most members of the public. A better approach would be, quote, "When there is significant public interest on an issue before the council, as evident from public attendance or otherwise, and when time permits, the president shall include additional public comment sessions specific to the issue," end quote. That was one comment. Another one is, "I think this suggestion has been working very well and would recommend retaining it." Those are the two.
So I would say that we keep it as we wrote it, because only one person had a problem with it. And we've actually had, Lynn is in the back room, but we haven't had that many, and it's, at the beginning, she's always been able to figure out who's here to talk about these issues.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think it's working well, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want, that there's some weird rule that, like, you're telling by how many people, just, yeah, I like the way it says.
Okay, 4.4, Margaret has a full delete of everything to describe an executive session.
So I wrote Margaret a note separately that said, "We so appreciate everything you did, but one of the things is, because you didn't sit through hours of meetings, is you don't know why we did some of the things we did. And one of the things that we did, for example, with executive session, is we were trying to not repeat what's in the law, but yet give the public a sense of, what are they doing? Like, how can they go into executive session?" So she gutted it, which in my opinion would mean you don't need to mention it at all, because you'd just go to MGL. So I'd like to keep it the way it was.
I wanted to keep it too, so can I just reject her edits?
I think that we were good on that.
I have to tell you.
I think there's one edit you might not, the statutory reference she added section A in. I don't know whether we want to keep that one or not.
Section 2.1 in paren little a, that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, Alyssa, I thi, yeah, I think that one's fine to keep.
It hasn't hurt anything, because then it actually has the reference.
It's much easier to reject an edit than de-edit the edits in terms of the way it looks, I have to tell you.
Her change of shall instead of may in the executive sessions versus the gutting? No, she was, but that changes the shall be convened, it was what it was read to, so instead of may be convened. I like may, I think.
Yeah.
Personally.
The only thing I like about what she added here, because for the reasons we stated, is the actual MGL reference, which maybe we just put at the end of the 4.4 heading, rather than having, have its own sentence, but however we, whatever looks good to you, Kathy.
I think it looks fine. I'm just trying to, where the executive sessions may be entered only in two, did she make, uh, uh, where was the may and the shall that you were talking out?
She had two.
I, because I just rejected her changes.
She, she had, her, her sentence would have read, "Executive sessions shall be convened in accordance with MGL 30A chap, section 21B, for the reasons stated in MGL 30A, section 21A." We had, "Executive sessions may be entered only after the council, blah, 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 blah." And then we had, "Executive sessions may only be convened for reasons stated in, blah, blah, blah."
So where would you put the shall?
So I think the may in the first paragraph is good, but maybe the shall, "Executive sessions shall only be convened for reasons stated in that one."
That may should turn into a, uh...
Yeah.
The first may is...
Is fine, but I think the second one should be a shall.
Got it. Okay. We love our mayes and shaws.
4.5 was just a computation of time from Margaret. We had a comment that said, "We haven't been following this. I think this is a great rule, as I often fear if I read the packet too early, then I will miss things, but can we abide by it?" So this is, goes back to the posting. And 4.5, "May have an unintended consequence. If a committee meets three to seven days before a meeting, it may be impossible for the committee chair to prepare a report three days prior to the meetings. It is complicated by the general statutory rule that weekends are not included when actions are required within 10 days or fewer. This requirement rate may reduce the number of written reports and increase the reliance on oral reports."
I think this goes back to the enforcement question, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's harder for committees that meet on Wednesdays, on Thursdays, or Wednesdays, I guess. Impossible for Thursdays.
Impossible for Thursdays, yeah.
I guess I saw it as aspirational, right? This is, this is our general standard. If you can meet it, great. If you can't meet it, what's going to happen to you? I mean, nothing. Somebody's going to complain if a particular committee's not maybe fulfilling their obligation to report back more effectively, right? Like, how come they always give a verbal report? You know, that, that could be a question. But I think setting an idea is not saying, "Well, now that we have this rule, everyone has to twist themselves into a pretzel." I mean, it's, it's generally what we expect. We understand, particularly as we're all meeting less often, honestly. A lot of our committees, once we get into a groove, aren't going to be facing quite as much time pressure.
So I think I'm hearing we leave it as is, and the question of, what do we mean my days will be taken care of by our, how you compute a day. And there's a little bit of slack here when it's late breaking news, you know, as in, couldn't, but it, I do think the expectation that a committee has met, I find it really difficult to get things sent to me by email Monday morning.
Yes.
Because I actually don't know they're, I don't always know they're there. I mean, I may be doing something else, and so I'm supposed to have read something I didn't know I had, which makes it extremely difficult. And sometimes it is or isn't in the packet in a way that I know it just got added. You know, it, it's just, um, you know, so I like the idea of it being a tough rule unless we, you know, so I'd almost postpone something if it can't get to me, maybe before, and worst is getting it three or four o'clock in the afternoon before Monday. You know, I mean, you just shouldn't come in that late.
Can I just, this may not be the right forum for this, but all of these points are leading to the idea, we need somebody else to be working on the minutes for all of us and posting them and doing all of these things. So there's a clear need for that.
The, the other aspect to this that I think we need to not lose sight of is that arguably, any committee report is an expression of opinion and should not be being provided outside of a posted meeting, and until we have it set up such that the public is getting it 48 hours ahead, it's actually arguably, by some people in Division of Open Government, not supposed to be submitted prior to the meeting at which it's considered, which is, of course, ridiculous, because how are you going to take time to read a report? So our, our lives are complicated by that issue, but techni, yeah.
Okay, so we're moving on, because we're...
Yeah, let's just go past it.
We're so far at the...
We're good.
Minor edit world.
So 5.1, um, I saw in B, two changes, that we want to probably change president to presiding officer in 5.1B.
I see.
Both references should probably more properly be presiding officer. And the comment, there, so D, I'm not sure we need the president in there versus just presiding officer.
Yeah. Given that we're trying to consistently use presiding officer, we can remove president.
Yeah.
In place, presiding officer in place of.
Right, and, and presiding officer, Margaret added.
So we just want to take out president?
President. Without first being recognized by the presiding officer.
5.1B, I changed president to presiding officer, so then the next one down is D?
D.
Okay.
And B had two changes, two places.
I did two presiding officers there.
And D?
And then D, the number two has a one, okay.
Now, D, just at the very beginning, where Margaret's changes are.
Just, just do president. I mean, get rid of president.
President there, and then I guess, yeah, D2.
Right, got it.
Has one. There was a, a comment on 5.1E. "Council's response to public comment, the president's recognition of counselor or staff to answer questions of public, very important, more important than the 10:00 PM closing time." And 5.1D5, "I support D5, which is written comments submitted. If this, I wonder if this should also be expanded to include written comments sent prior to the meeting, and to specify that written comments are never included in the packet." And then, is there another one? We're on 5.1E. "The comment is confusing as written because of the placement of the reference to the open meeting law. It would be clearer to say, quote, 'The intention of the public comment period is for council to hear comments on matters that are not on the agenda, not to engage in discussion of those issues. The open meeting law may not be a barrier to discussion because these matters were not anticipated by the president 48 hours in advance."
We're mixing a whole lot of different things together.
Right.
So let's go back to D5, right? We fixed D.
Yes.
D5, as to whether or not we want to add anything about those other comments, and while I respect that concept, I think it's going to make it more confusing if we try and address that issue of people emailing us stuff and saying, "Put this in your packet and put this in the record." I'm not sure that's easily addressed, except through a completely different rule.
I just heard the person, no, I heard the...
You want to read it a different way?
No, I heard the, the comment being, this says, "A written comment during the meeting would be sent to us."
Yeah.
I think the comment was just suggesting written comments prior or during the meeting. We're not putting the word prior, just making sure that if something came in to us, that we got it. Was that what the comment?
So I'll read the comment again. "I support this. I wonder if this should be, should also be expanded to include written comments sent prior to the meeting, and to specify that written comments are never included in the packet." So I'm not sure what expansion would be if written comments prior to a meeting aren't included in the packet. Are we just handed a whole bunch and the clerks got to figure out what we received? I'm, I'm just not sure where this comment's going, if, for the written comments received prior to a meeting.
I read this as, you know, when someone emails us, and it comes to, Lynn is forwarding them, or we all get them, but suppose a letter comes in, that we should somehow know that, um, "I'm sending you my views on this." We should know it. They didn't have to hand it to us during the meeting. So I was thinking that we don't have the word prior, you know, that if there's a written comment on something, we could get it prior to or during. And then the person who's giving it this, but they don't want it in the packet, you know, they just want us to know what's been coming in. So they were trying to make it clear we weren't going to be posting it.
So this is all talking about things happening at a meeting, and this was mainly to address the idea of somebody come in with 13 letters and walking around and handing them all to us?
Right, exactly.
As opposed to what you said, which is really important, that we get the information ahead of meetings that's provided to us ahead of meetings.
Right.
Which is a different concept.
If it wasn't already sent to all of us naturally, right?
To me, that's a different, and so if we want to, we could add something, but I'd be uncomfortable with saying, "Or prior," within that same sentence, because this is talking about actions happening during the meeting. But maybe, I mean, maybe we do need to add that someplace.
So am I, should I change anything, or should we, the actual practice has been to get us those comments?
I think if something's been sent by mail to, and addressed to the town council, we've been receiving copies in our maroon folders before meetings.
That's what I think we, by practice, it's been happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to specify, whereas we were calling this out to make it clear, you just hand all the stuff to the clerk, and she'll take care of it, and she'll make sure we all get it. She won't just put it in a hole somewhere.
You're not walking to each individual counselor and just handing something to them, yeah.
Can we back up just a moment, though, because four, I, I object to Margaret's change on identifying by name and address. We have never required that in anything other than maybe some kinds of public hearings, and I just think that's not necessary.
Where is that?
So I, um...
D4.
D4, she added, "By, identify themselves by name and address." That just feels very uncomfortable to me.
Oh, do a reject. Oh, do a reject.
Yeah, no, I think that, that's good. The address made sense if it's in a written, in, in the register of peoples, but not when you're actually making your comment.
Right, you shouldn't have to say.
And that's probably upon recognition by the presiding officer.
Oh, there's another one.
There's another one. There's a lot of them. We'll just find them all. There's one in E1.
Yeah, you're right, there is, isn't there? And then, yeah, when we're in E, I, I actually don't have, share the same understanding Margaret does about council practice, because we have, in fact, turned to the town manager for a question at some point, and practice, of course, is a very limited number of months old. I liked what we wrote, but is there a way to elaborate on it for the counselor comment that we got associated with that? To make it clear that in theory, something somebody's bringing up could be an item unanticipated, so we don't want to seem like we're shutting the door?
The counselor comment actually added some stuff. The counselor comment had proposed, "The intention of the public comment period is for the council to hear comments on matters that are not on the agenda, not to engage in discussion of those issues," which actually isn't something we've done for public comment.
Because we have different kinds of public comments.
And, and you, we can't restrict that you can't talk about what's on the agenda at all. You know, you're allowed to. It's just sometimes we're saying you're going to do it when we hit that item. Other times, we're saying you can do it at the general comment. So, but not to engage in discussion of those issues. So the, and then it said, "The open meeting law may not be a barrier to discussion because these matters were not anticipated by the president, if they're not on the agenda." So I guess the concern was the incom... So I guess the concern was the in compliance with open meeting law phrasing.
I don't think we have a problem here.
Just delete the in compliance with open meeting law phrasing. We had done it, we, we struggled with that phrase the last time.
It doesn't seem like we have to have those words.
Yeah.
We could just take that out.
Right.
Because then we don't provide that barrier that councilors concerned about, but we also don't automatically open it up to something.
Yeah.
It remains at the Presiding Officer's discretion and just not addressing it is perhaps best.
Right.
I think, yeah, I think that solves it as much as it's going to get solved.
Because it doesn't make it a three cent, a three line rule anymore.
It's rid of one line. Okay, public hearings. Here's the comments. Public hearings are required for many reasons, some required by state law and others by charter. There is not always a petition or a petitioner, such as a hearing to set the tax rate. When the Finance Committee schedules a budget hearing, it's required by the charter. There is no petitioner. This proposed rule needs to be reconsidered.
Which one?
The public hearings, 5.2.
5.2, is it C that they're considering now?
Uh, that one was just 5.2 in general. My guess is it's the after petitioner's presentation. So there's another one that says, "I don't know if," and this is specifically for C, "I don't know if this is the typical order for public hearing, but it seems like questions from counselors should come first or second so that all questions are answered before any testimony is given." So I think that was taken care of with Margaret's recommended change of adding a questions from counselors and then comments from counselors at the end. And that's it for the public hearing section comments. So maybe instead of after petitioner's presentation, the public hearing format is, one, petitioner's presentation, if any, two, questions from counselors, three, public asking questions, four, you know, or just presentation?
I'm sorry, so maybe do we just, where it says after petitioner's presentation, maybe turn that into one of the steps? Instead of that parentheses, is we have that be first?
Yeah, yeah, instead of the parentheses, number one is petitioner's presentation, number two is questions from counselors, then public, then public speaking in favor, public opposing, then comments from counselors, and then you're closing the hearing. Although comments from counselors isn't part of the hearing, comments from counselors-
I want to say questions from counselors again, actually, because part of what we're trying to get at-
Oh, yeah, you can have multiple questions, yeah.
It's two different question periods, is actually, because comments will take place during-
After the hearing is closed.
Right, after the giving speech part is closed. But, but we should be able to ask, so whether we want to say questions or comments or just questions, but we need under what's currently listed as five, which will be six, I guess, will be, and it's another question period because we, we may have more questions. Some, the public may have brought something up that we then turn to Dave, the President, and say, "Could Mr. Zomeck address that more because we don't understand what the public just said versus what he just said?" So-
And, and the whole about nonpetitioners, we did have in E, the format doesn't apply to public hearings to consider the budget, the master plan.
Yep.
Um, hearings where procedures are governed by state law or hearings on topics where the, where the council is not responding to a formal petition. So I think we've already sort of done some of that hedging there, that the format's not for formal petition, essentially anything formal. So I think we've hedged enough there.
So what that, after public speaking and opposition, should that be?
Okay, I'm just telling you, I'm following it, but I haven't typed anything yet because I'm not, I would like to do it all at once.
In C, I think what it is, is in C, public hearing format, colon, and then number one is now petitioner's presentation. Margaret's added one is now two, everything else got bumped numbers. And we are rejecting her change in the new six from questions from counselors to comments from counselors, going back to questions from counselors, because comments are part of D, the council debate.
Okay, so it's public hearing format, colon, number one is petitioner's presentation, then questions from counselors.
Mm-hmm.
Then, just tell me what comes next.
Public asking question, public speaking in favor, public speaking in opposition, questions from counselors.
Again.
And then questions again, okay.
And then there could be a motion to close the evidentiary portion, and that's when we have the comments, so to speak. So that's part of our deliberation.
Got it. Moving to public dialogue, yes?
We're back to 5.3, like we said.
Okay, so then we'll, um, what I'm thinking would be, the simplest would be by majority vote, comma, the council may hold public dialogue sessions?
Yep.
Okay?
Sounds good to me.
That way it's a more inclusive, do we need to do this? Okay, yeah, that works. So that first part where it says, "At least two times a year," instead it says, "By majority vote, comma, at least two times a year," or, no.
At least two times a year.
Okay, so by majority vote, the council may hold. By majority vote. May hold. May hold. Public dialogue sessions, a public dialogue session.
That, that's, so it now reads the, by majority vote, the council may hold public dialogue sessions, period. Or, or maybe I'll say, "May hold, a," so I can only have to edit the second sentence.
Right.
"May hold a public dialogue session."
Yes.
Then it says, "This session may occur," so everything else stays exactly as we wrote it?
Right, it no longer requires it, and it's a majority vote, so it's like, everybody agreed, we should do this thing. Cool.
The only other comments that the PDF had for Rule 5 was Rules 5 and 6, 5.5 and 5.6, and probably would go on reading the comment to 5.7 too, which is, given that these are already discussed in the charter, is it necessary to repeat them in the rules? That goes back to sort of a general, how much do we want to repeat from the charter for explanation and not having to jump back and forth?
Which one was that, Mandy? I'm confused.
5.5, 5.6, district meetings and free petition.
Ah, right.
So we, did we just jump through Margaret's edits of 5.4?
We didn't.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
She was getting excited.
She's ignoring it.
No, I'm, I'm willing to jump forward, I just need to be told to jump forward.
So let's go ahead and jump forward for a minute, because you were, because that's where we got comments.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm fine jumping.
So we're on 5.5 and 5.6, but we're going to go back to 5.4. But the district meeting stuff is just, is it a more user-friendly version in all reality or is it just repetitious and do we feel the need to have it in there?
It, it was put in after the fact because we had a, a whole thing called public participation, and-
Yes.
And when we had this discussion early on, it was harking back to our opening statement about our values, where we believed in robust public.
Right.
So we wanted to show, if anyone should ever read our rules, they don't have to go read the charter, that-
Right.
-to the extent we can, we've got a lot of opportunities. So it deliberately, it deliberately repeated to say, "This is not, these are not the only ones," you know, the new things we're putting in, there's a bunch of other times.
Don't forget about all these other cool avenues you have.
So I think that would be a good explanation to whichever of the counselors put that in, don't repeat, that-
Yeah.
This, this is again, uh, this is who we are as the, as the Amherst Town Council.
Yep.
So I would want to keep them just as is.
Show all the avenues, yes, yes, I like it. So we're leaving it all?
Yeah, leaving as is.
Yeah, because we want, we want to show all the options, plus the new options we made.
Right.
So now we have to go back.
5.4.
To 5.4.
I didn't have a problem with her edits. I think she, you know, it cuts out what the forums are for, but I think that's okay. It actually might give us a little more leeway when holding a forum on, say, the master plan, if we haven't defined it somewhere as to exactly what you're supposed to do there. And same with the capital improvement forum. So I didn't really have a, I'd be okay with accepting all of hers changes.
Whereas I run the exact opposite way and said, quite harshly in my note to myself, "There is zero point in not describing the forums. If you're going to just use the headers in the charter, then you can skip all of it because it doesn't, there's no point to it. The rules aren't supposed to be a repeat of the charter." In this case, unlike, for example, district meetings and free petition, which we wanted to make sure people knew those things existed without having to go and read the charter and the various places that they can find them, is that I thought this really was an opportunity for us to be able to help engage ourselves and the public as to what would we do at budget public forum, what would we do at capital improvement forum, and what would we do at master plan forum.
So, so Alyssa, you're, just to-
I liked it the way it was.
Quick, do it quickly. You're saying, keep the description of each of these in. Do you like the rest of her edits? I mean, I, I found the rest of the edits simplifying and clarifying, but so is it mainly the objection to getting rid of the description of these three?
It's mainly, yes, and the only other one I had was associated with her edits, so that to me was the substantive one, and the only other one is I thought it might be a little clearer when she's trying to describe our bizarro one-half of the time scenario, which I appreciate the crack at that, is maybe it's calculated, instead of saying just as the formal presentation, maybe it would help to say as the initial formal presentation, because it's like what happens at the beginning is what counts, as opposed to the follow-up part. So I thought maybe adding the word initial would be a little bit helpful between the and formal in that last sentence on page 11.
I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, the only thing I wondered was, she starts with one half, you know, the, the way public forum or forum is defined in the charter has, that one half of the time must be devoted to public comment?
Right, and that's still-
And she starts with, "One half of the time is calculated as formal presentation," you know, whereas, you know, it, it's almost swaps-
Yep.
-where the one half is public forum, the phrase "public forum shall mean a meeting during which more than one half of the meeting time on the agenda is devoted to public comment." So maybe, um, we could just say, um, some other rewording that's like, "Comments or responses to question, or responses to questions by, responses to comments or questions from the public shall be considered time devoted to public comment."
So-
For purposes of calculation or something.
So get rid of-
Get rid of the first sentence.
And then-
And then sort of say, "For purposes of calculating time, comma, responses to questions, responses by the town officials to questions or comments made by the public shall be considered
So it says, "For purposes of calculating time, responses, responses to questions by the town manager, staff or counselors shall be considered, uh, part of the public comment time?" Or, because they're not public comments.
No, so responses by town staff or town officials, I don't know, by the town manager, staff or counselors, to questions and comments made by the public. Her, her wording was kind of confusing anyway. So it's the responses by us, to questions or comments made by the public, shall be considered part of the time devoted to public comment. I don't know whether that's clear or not.
Yeah, it's going to be a negative.
I'm editing the edit, so, "For purposes of calculating time, comma, responses by the town manager, staff or counselors to questions or comments made by the public shall be considered part of the time devoted to public comment."
I think that works.
Yep. And then as I go down, um, the next one I think is, Claire, makes it simpler, "No fewer than one public forum on, for each of the following," and then we're rejecting the edits that, get rid of the definitions of these. And do I keep the last, "In addition to specific forums, the council shall hold forums in accordance with," blah, 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 blah? She got rid of all of that and-
Why'd she get rid of all that?
Charter, what-
She just referred to the charter instead of describing what those sections say.
I would just keep those words. I mean, I, I would reject all those edits because it, it's not confusing.
I'm fine with rejecting those edits.
Our delightful Rule 6, code of courtesy, conduct and debate.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk about what's in the counselor comments first, Mandy?
So I will try. Six, there's a couple, and I apologize for jumping around, because they jump around. 6.4, "We need a parliamentarian who is not a council member, appoint one from the public." 6.2D, "Is sufficient. I do not like silencing the public. Smacks a dictatorship. They have a right to express their opinion." Someone else, "Regarding no applause rule, it's against our value of celebrating our achievements. I feel we can accommodate the main concern. Don't want to support audible, visible expressions that create divisiveness by adding wording that makes that point clear. Those present shall not engage in audible demonstration of approval or disapproval if it creates divisiveness or something like that. That would allow us to clap for collective victories in our children like we did at the end of the GAI, Steve acknowledged." 6.1, "In the statement, participants should avoid, I would encourage a stronger word than should." 6.2, should I stop, I've got two, three, oh, I'll do, I'll do the rest. 6.2, "I strongly prefer option two. When contentious issues arise, audible demonstrations of approval or disapproval can alter the entire atmosphere of the room. Consider a situation where a member of the public offers public comment against a particular policy and the room erupts in applause at the end of the comment. This may now discourage or make uncomfortable a member of the public who is present to speak in favor of a particular policy. Cheering or applause is not just about celebration, it can also signal agreement, and that has the potential to change the character of debate. I do not believe 6.2D is sufficient, as in the example above, people clapping at the end of a public comment would not, quote, disturb or impede the orderly procedure of the meeting, but certainly would change the atmosphere of the room, which can stifle debate." 6.3K, um, "I think we have become accustomed to this rule, but it should be reconsidered. I know everyone likes a casual environment, but we are elected officials engaged in serious deliberation, and our address to each other should reflect that. Further in talking with Senator Rosenberg about this issue, he mentioned that during contentious policy debates, the use of first names can make things feel very personal, whereas using counselor name, quote, counselor, and then the counselor's name, shows respect even in the face of disagreement. He encouraged using titles as it can help preserve decorum during debate." And in 6.4, "Is this a majority vote? Does that need to be specified?" So that's, I think that was the thing we actually might have just deleted. And that is all the comments on Rule 6.
So in 6.4, to make our lives simple, in 6.4, we already deleted that, right? Where we took out the part about that.
Yes.
So now we don't really need to specify because it's just, go look elsewhere to how this is going to work.
Right.
And then, and then the Presiding Officer thing.
Is, and here, in my, in general, so you don't know, everyone should alert me to it, but instead of the President or Presiding Officer, should we just switch to Presiding Officer?
6.4.
It's 6.4.
Um, so, I'm not sure what to do with that one because, because the preserving decorum and order is the Presiding Officer.
Right.
Right? But then there's that sentence, "The President may speak in favor of opposition to any motion, may participate and vote under the same rules as applied to other counselors."
Okay, that President's-
That, that one I think needs to be-
It's just the very first one, the President, and perin or perut, do we leave it that? That's the way I edited it last time.
I think you could just say, "The President-" I think you could just say, the president or presiding officer shall preserve decorum, without the parentheses, maybe?
Okay. And then it's clear that the next kept paragraph about the may speak in favor is literally just about the president.
Right.
Now, we can go back up to the other.
Yes, that, we were taking the easy one, because it was near the end.
I was just doing the last one, because we dismissed 6.4 now, so now we can go up.
So 6.1 is presiding officer and president, again, in the, in the first paragraph. Address their remarks to the presiding officer, right? So that's one where we change it, yeah?
I've changed it.
Excellent. And then there's the C, 6.2A, where it's C Rule Five versus just Rule Five.
6.1, someone said, in the statement, participants should avoid, encourage stronger than "should." I'm trying to figure out where this is.
Where they meant that.
So, so we've got, in the-
Is that the very first sentence?
Oh, the second sentence. Participants should avoid discussing personalities and not impugn. So we could say, participants shall avoid.
Ooh.
And, and then later on, you've got, all participants should address their remarks to the presiding officer. You should probably say, all participants shall address their remarks, to get rid of those two "shoulds" to "shalls."
Yeah, we usually use "may" or "shall," not "should," as this has evolved over time.
That takes care of all the comments in 6.1, I think.
And in 6.2A, is where I just wondered if we were adding, at the end of the reference to Rule Five, if we were adding the word "C" or not adding the word "C" there. I don't remember what our result was there.
I mean, we could.
I-
It's there, I don't think it-
You know what? I think we could take it out altogether.
You think, don't even mention Rule Five?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
What?
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, we have an entire section called Public Participation.
And so rather than pointing them to it, just assume that they know it exists?
Yeah, because this Rule Six comes after Rule Five.
It is a whole rule.
It's an entire rule, yeah.
Right, why would you skip to six and not read five first? I could see that. I mean, in other cases, we are sending people specifically-
I'm fine either way, because I don't find a cross-reference, you know, because we've got several places in five, so we can't even say, here, there's, I, I'm fine, because I don't think this is very-
Why don't we just delete it?
Okay.
All right. I just think we wanted to make, I think one of the reasons it came into there is so that we made it super clear, like we did in some other places, super clear, there's a whole rule about this. Like, we're not just giving you one sentence, we have a whole rule.
So, on the next one down on B, Margaret's comment is interesting, because I hadn't thought, that we can't necessarily restrict it to, if someone comes in, I've got three things I want to talk about, we'd hear about three things, as long as they can get it done in three minutes, yes?
Yeah, I guess I looked at that one as saying, you should have, you shouldn't ramble randomly about-
You should talk about something.
You should have a point. I guess that's what it is. That's how I read, focus on specific issues. You should have a point, but-
So, so you don't think the concern she raises, you know, because I didn't think of it, this was restrictive either. I mean, I thought, you know-
Yeah, I don't think it actually-
Okay, so we can take, I'll just delete her comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
What is her comment?
Her comment is worried that we can't stop people from saying what they want to say, and, you know, so is it enforceable? And it, this is more saying, you know, we're hoping the public coming is talking about a specific issue, so we're not really, you've got three minutes, so you could use it, you know, would someone get up and talk about, my child visited me yesterday, and we had a really good time? You know, I mean, that would be an example where they're not bringing up an issue to the council.
We, maybe we could say, instead of specific issues, shall, shall pertain to matters under the jurisdiction of the council.
Ooh.
Yes.
That's way better. I like that.
I think we did that back in public participation in Rule Five somewhere. I think we had similar language in Rule Five.
And what is the president supposed to do?
They don't, so that's what she, she's raising the enforcement side. Why, why?
We had a situation like that, by the way, very recent.
Right, and so that gives you the opportunity to say, please focus on issues that pertain to the thing, but I mean, you can't unwind it. It's not like you're in a courtroom where you can say, just regard what that person just said. So, I mean, the best you can do is say, is that kind of constant care and feeding of public comment, please focus on issues, and then we're always going to have people who break the rules, and then talk about their grandchildren visiting, so, you know, I mean, it's just going to happen.
So, instead of the legal "shall pertain," can I say, shall focus on issues under the jurisdiction of the council, or something like that? Yes?
There are issues that people might come to talk about, that we may think are not under our jurisdiction, but in fact, we're under the jurisdiction of the town. Technically, therefore, they're under our jurisdiction. So I just want to, somebody may come to, you know, complain about something a department did. Technically, that is part of our duty, but people may not see it that way.
I personally think that what we have written here, rather than editing it down, you know, if someone wanted us to make a statement about nuclear power, you know, some of the things, you know, that we don't have any control of, control of, we might be willing to entertain, could you come back with that as a proclamation or some, you know, I mean, we wouldn't restrict them that we can't, you know, if they wanted to make a statement, you know, I'm thinking of one that might, would the town council support something that the legislature might do for Medicare for All? I mean, it's not, the town can't do it, we can't do it, you know, so there, you know, people might make these kinds of statements, and we wouldn't just want to say, that's, we don't want to hear about that, right? So I kind of like, public comment shall focus on specific issues, not fixing it.
I don't have a preference one way or the other, so I'm okay.
Yeah, go back to, leave it the way it was.
Good point, Kathy.
Then we're on to D, and is it technically a new E, or was it just added?
If you look at it as, as-
It would be a new E and F eventually, but I guess it's not quite now, because of formatting, right? The demonstrations? Or is it just part of D?
No, I, I, when I did this, Word wouldn't let me move it out. I'll figure out how to get it, it's supposed to be DEF.
Yeah.
And I, somehow I couldn't get rid of the little arrow.
And it was in, it's whatever we, whatever blood ends up on the floor at the end of this meeting, associated with this particular item, it is within D. And so, E and F are the same.
It's a sub, it's a sub of issue, it should be a little 1, right? It should be a 1, and I tried to-
Oh, is it supposed to be a little 1?
It's not.
No, I thought it was supposed to be a new E, and E would become F.
So I'll bring it, so let me do it right now and see-
That was originally what was-
No.
Proposed an option.
Option one was that D was sufficient. Option two was adding a sentence before D. It wasn't adding a whole nother letter. It was just elaborating on D.
Okay, because in a prior draft, it was a separate letter. That's why I'm confused, I guess.
The last one we provided said, add a separate sentence before D, which I interpreted as adding a sentence before the word "those" in D, and someone else might interpret as adding another letter.
Letter, okay.
So, either way, either, we could do it either way, but I think Kathy captured here what we talked about then on the seventh, which was something that Shalini had offered, which is something I mentioned earlier, I don't agree with, and we've heard the counselor comment that actually expressed what I think better than I did.
And then you had another counselor comment that said, this feels dictatorial, and why are we suppressing speech? So, we got two extraneous, or three on this, some in favor, some not in favor, of, of having it at all, but also of softening it a little bit. So Shalini's, added words soften it a little bit. I mean, keep it, but soften it.
I just want to address the concerns that people had. The two things I heard was, one, I mean, the main thing I heard was the divisiveness, like, one way or the other, if it's, you know, we don't want people to feel awkward about it, or whatever their decision is. So if you can address that concern, and what is the, is there any other concern that's left out?
My comment, associated with that, is that if 13 people could agree on what was disruptive or divisive, we'd be fine, but just as some would find it chilling to say anything about this, I don't think, I, I think that what the counselor wrote separately was actually really clear, in that you would not, you personally, a person on the council, may never consider applause to be divisive, whereas somebody out in the audience who was just totally trounced in what they thought their opinion was, may find it very divisive, that a whole bunch of people just burst into applause for something that was exactly the opposite of what they wanted. How do you, as a counselor, decide that particular display of applause? And that's why I was saying earlier, associated with my version of it, is that, you know, when we spontaneously applaud third graders, like, awesome, who's going to do anything to us? Like, I don't see why we want to prevent ourselves from saying, and we would never, I mean, we, we have a rule. If people spontaneously explode into applause because someone's retired, or because someone did an amazing thing, or because third graders came before us, I don't think that's the same as an everyday rule that says, we don't go through each order of business, thinking that maybe somebody will decide to have an expression that's visible or audible about, ooh, look, they voted yes on these appointments, oh, hiss, they didn't do that on that appointment, was that divisive or not? I mean, I don't think that having the rule that I asked for prevents us from having something spontaneous happen, that it would be up to the president at that point to say, okay, that's enough clapping, we need to stop after half an hour, but it wouldn't be, no, stop that, don't applaud for third graders. Like, you don't have to have that interpretation of the rule. Things happen spontaneously that we might appreciate. I cannot agree to saying that someone decides what's disruptive or divisive in terms of an approval or disapproval, because no two of us is going to agree, because we're not sitting out in the audience, we don't know.
So, go, Darcy.
I feel like there's, you know, people feel strongly about this, obviously, both ways, so I, you know, and I feel like we had a very close vote on the council.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can just, you know, leave it as one item that we still haven't finally decided, and just let the council decide?
Just yellow shade it, then? And, and then the question is, if, if the recommendation is to leave it, it's with the qualifying words disruptive or divisive, or do we go back to the, those present, the period after disapproval, as it was written? That's, I just, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it in, yellow highlighted, to say we want to come back to this.
I think the addition clarifies, it improves upon our last version, so we should have it with the new words in it, divide.
And I'm concerned by putting the words in, but I was going to say this, we have to also remember in terms of clapping and all, that this is a rule for the public, not a rule for us. So, we could applaud the third graders all we want, if we want. We're not prohibiting from, us from applauding a presentation or something, we're saying the public shouldn't do stuff. I'm, I'm concerned by this, who judges whether it's divisive? I mean, disruptive is a little bit easier to determine, but divisive, because you don't know if someone sitting in an audience, whether they've spoken or not, and, and you go to the counselor that said, and, and I will, I'll go back to, I think Alyssa used the argument about Indigenous Peoples' Day at town meeting, when that was up for a vote, there were some individuals that spoke passionately for keeping it named Columbus Day as an Italian heritage recognition, not necessarily for Columbus and what he did, but for Italian heritage in general. And it took a lot of courage to get up in town meeting when, and say that, number one, and then when it passed overwhelmingly with only maybe eight people, there was a very few against, and the room broke out in applause, that could be considered very divisive, but I'm guessing for those that were applauding, they were not believing it was divisive. And so divisive is, is hard to, it's a much harder thing to determine agreement on, as to whether something was divisive.
I think anything that could be voted one way or the other is divisive, but anything that involves celebrating a common victory is not divisive, so I don't know if you want to state it differently, but-
I guess, though, a common victory isn't always common, and not unanimous, and so even a unanimous vote on the council doesn't have most likely unanimous support in town, and so in applauding a unanimous vote of the council, yeah, I, so I, I'm just having problems figuring out how that would be interpreted, so I'd just rather get rid of it.
When I, so, anything that involves a vote, I think, could be, could have either/or, and would be divisive, so I'm not, when I say a common victory, doesn't mean a common vote, I just mean that, like, the children coming, or someone that Steve pointed out, or someone that's, you know, retirement, or something, you're acknowledging somebody, so that doesn't involve a vote, but it's an acknowledgement. So maybe what we want to say is not use the word divisive, but if, is that, if there is, but if it's creating such a big controversy, let's not do it.
All I ask is that if you want to leave this to a vote of the council on Monday, that we, you place, give them two or three options, so that they clearly vote, versus letting them sit there and try to wordsmith.
Okay.
Because that takes time.
So, you know, the, the original clean version was, those present shall not engage in demonstration of approval or disapproval, period, right?
The original was audible.
What?
The original was actually audible, demonstrations of approval or disapproval. And then we had the conversation about finger snapping and hand waving, but the original said audible.
And signs, and signs. Finger snapping, waving, and display of signs.
Signs, so we decided approval. So, that would be a way of stating this. The second would be, remove divisive and say that are disruptive, or, I'm just thinking, even if we were talking about it, you know, accept this in, to, in celebration or appreciation of, you know, I mean, so it, but we're hedging around it.
Came up with another idea. What about, based on what Shalini just said, approval or disapproval of a council action?
Right.
Of a council vote, or a council decision? I mean, that, that, as a, as a, potentially a third alternative, or some sort of alternative wording, if we're going to have wording, and I know Alyssa's like, she's problems with that, but that, you know, that doesn't say disruptive or divisive, but it's on specific votes, there's no applause.
So, the problem with talking about specific votes, if that's the only thing you talk about, is that now you have not addressed the fact that when Bill gets up there and says, we need to have Italian-American Day, by God, then the rest of the population that's sitting out there can go, boo, hiss, whatever, no, don't say that. So it's, it's fine to have one thing that talks about us, but it doesn't relate to that. So, I'm literally at the point, at this point, where I'm willing to give up on this, and I am willing to go with, if, let me be clear when I'm giving up. I'm willing to give up, my old phrasing, of those present shall not engage in audible demonstrations of approval or disapproval, which was based on my 20 years of legislative experience in the town of Amherst. I am willing to give that up if all we say is what we already have about those present conducting disturbing or impeding. If we don't say anything about the applause stuff, if we don't say anything about celebrating our community, if we just leave it the frick alone, and go with this, and then if it turns out that we're having trouble with that, and our president says, you know, I kind of wish I had another rule that I can enforce here, we can figure out a way to phrase it then.
I accept that.
I second that.
Let it be that. Shalini wrestled Alyssa to the ground.
So rather than multiple wordsmiths, so we're deleting this, so there'll be an A, B, C, D, E, and when we explain this next week, we can always, as Lynette pointed out, is, put it on the, you know, up on the screen, please don't break- is, put it on the, you know, up on the screen, please don't break out in clapping or cheering, you know, so we, we can see what we can do to just send the signal and message in a very informal way, rather than a rule, gone, it's gone.
I, I just wanted to, it's ironic that it's the one rule Margaret said good rule to in her comments, and now we've just deleted it. That's her years of experience at town meetings, speaking.
Without question, I have to say, both Margaret and Paul and I have spoken about the two times we've had applause, and I'm not surprised to see they're coming.
And so I will explain to the people who felt that was important, exactly why we got to the point where we got. Well, particularly because it was an option, right? That's what makes it extra complicated, is if we're trying to show them what you saw on the sixth versus what you see on the twentieth.
I've got it as a deleted something.
I have it in the minutes.
Then the other, Mandy, as you went through the larger list, one person.
Six point three K, which Margaret also had a change to, the addressing of each other, was the next one that people commented on.
I, I actually think we should just get rid of K as a rule, um, that's the way we are acting, um, and, and I want, I'm turning to Darcy, because she said this was such a popular thing that we did, that it would be nice to put it in as a rule, but there might be instances, what's been pointed out, there might be instances, we need to be more formal in some way.
The first name thing.
Right? You know, in a hearing, when we're going up against something, where we wanna go back to Counselor Shane.
Can I just what the number is?
So this is the, addressing each other by our, our first names.
Yeah, I knew what the concept was, I just couldn't scroll to the right place. Yes, K, K.
So Margaret says, do we wanna compel this, and the comment that was sent in is, they, one person never liked it in the first place, but the other said there are gonna be instances, like Stan Rosenberg raised, that you might want, want, you know, to be called couns, you know, in a much more formal setting, you might wanna be addressing ourselves that way, so if we're silent on this, we can do what seems to work for the setting we're in, would be where I would go, but I'm also fine with leaving it in, I'm, you know, so I never found it, I haven't found it problematic.
I, I think that Margaret's suggestion is a good one, just to say may, because I think it's kind of cool that was the first, that was like the first rule that we came up with.
They just changed shall to may, yeah, and that solves the problem completely, yeah.
Well.
Then it will, it still gives, gives us the flexibility to do whatever we want to in different occasions.
Which is exactly my concern, so, um, it gives us the, let's have a shared understanding of what that means, it gives us the flexibility to do it within a meeting, or amongst different types of meetings, because what we didn't want, and we specifically talked about when we proposed this rule to the president, is we didn't want a list of, some people wanna be called Counselor Schreiber, and some people wanna be called Steve, and so, within a meeting, right, we don't want it to be like, do whatever you want within the meeting, because then nobody's gonna know who we're talking about, um, but I, I appreciate the concept of being more formal, but I don't know that we can effectively express without too many words, that we mean in different settings, we might wanna, so maybe we just leave it alone, would be my suggestion, and know that in a different setting, if our president is at some event somewhere, and wants to say Counselor Hanke instead of, that, that's fine, because we're, this rule's really talking about how we talk to each other here. If we think that this respect issue is, is so different, like Stan Rosenberg thinks, then it shouldn't be optional, we should absolutely always be calling each other counselor, he's not offering us flexibility, he's saying, you're doing it wrong, and so, I'm not sure why, if this was a hearing versus a regular council meeting, we would wanna call each other something different, and I, again, we can't go back to the idea of, well, it's whatever your personal preference is at any given moment, I think we have to have some consistency in, within a meeting anyway.
So I think there's two, um, issues, well, two competing prospects with this rule. The first one is, by us referring to our first names, each other by first names, we make us more accessible to the public, um, that, the contrast of that is, we're also less formal to the public, so it doesn't seem as serious, but the second one is, that's how we're perceived by the public, but then there's the, how we operate to each other, if we continue referring to each other by first names, disagreement could feel much more personal when we get to a heated topic, versus if we ourselves are referring to each other by Counselor Bal Mil, or, you know, and that allows us to maintain a good, by doing it through counselor, the argument is, that would allow us to maintain good working relationships that are, um, where the disagreement doesn't feel like an attack on a person, it's an attack more on an idea than it becoming more personal, so there's the, how does the public perceive us, but also, does how we address each other alter our own working relationships, either for better or worse, and which of those might be, might be the weight, which of those two weighs more on the decision side, and I think Stan's point to this counselor that made this was, using counselor and keeping it formal allows you to keep that, that sort of distance to allow you to work better in settings, and I might not be wording that well, but...
Can we, um, so, wait, um, what I'm hearing is that we don't want to person, make it feel personal, but adding the word counselor to me does not really change that, but could we instead just say that we don't talk about, like, oh, I didn't like what Mandy said, but we can just talk about the issues, and, or go through the president, find some other way of dealing with this, rather than just making it formal, am I clear? So, so we, we just make a rule that's more about, not involve personalities or counselors, but always just stay to the, speak to the issues.
Well, we do have that in our courtesy and conduct, you know, and I'm not sure whether shall or may is gonna change our behavior that much, so shall is fine, you know, and I can understand Alyssa said, we, we shouldn't be switching and each doing differently, the formalism, particularly when you're at a national legislative thing, people stay senators the rest of their lives, you know, like, you know, I retired twenty years ago, because they loved that title, but I, I don't necessarily think you distance yourself more from a human by calling them Counselor Shane than by calling them Kathy, um, you know, I understand you might, but I think you are still having a discussion with that person, um, and, you know, in a courtroom, one way, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that that works for me as an argument, so I think if we feel like this is, so I could see just being silent on it, not making it a rule, or changing it to may, or leaving it as we had, because I think it's working well, so, and I'm also really worried that it's, I shouldn't call out time, but it's twelve twenty-five, and we're at what I consider still the more, smaller ones, if it's not causing a problem, should we be trying to fix it?
And I think the efficiency has improved, so it improves the efficiency in our working, because it takes a whole lot longer to think of the counselor, madam, whatever, and, yeah, it's just the pros and cons of it, I think, so far, and we can always change it, if you think it's, it's getting out of hand.
I, so I say we leave it alone, and just move on.
Yeah.
It still says shall, until we change it at a future.
So the only other one was about a parliamentarian who is not a council member, which they mentioned in six point four.
How on earth would that work?
The only thing I could think of was that you could name the clerk of the council a formal parliamentarian, and the president can get advice.
They said they wanted a member of the public.
Yeah, no, I, I, like I said, the only thing I could think of was that our clerk of the council becomes the go-to on parliamentary questions, if we didn't want to do that.
I don't think we have to write it in, because we sometimes just asked, you know, what do we do here, and gotten the opinion, so I think we're good.
I mean, you, do, unless you feel the need for it, I mean, I thought you'd turn to them.
Every time I felt the need for it, I felt I could either get the answer from Paul or from Margaret, and, um, even then, there's been more recently a time where I had to go back and read Roberts' rules, I had to look at our rules, and I consulted with at least two other people who, four, three other people, um, and finally came up with what was okay or not okay, so, the biggest problem is at the moment, and if you're gonna, either this is gonna be somebody we already pay, or it's gonna be an additional burden, because you, this person would then have to be at every council meeting.
Right, and I, I think the person who sent in that comment, it's more when we had this, appealing the decision of a president, and we removed it, you know, so that's, that's out there, but, so I suggest we move to rule seven, and all I've got, again, is the market markup, so...
There was nothing in the PDF on rule seven at all.
So Margaret's suggestion, which everyone can see in the, in the comment, is, do we wanna add language that would, if you're gonna make a motion, you know in advance you're going to make a motion, get the written motion in ahead of time, is the way I'm reading it.
How does that work with open meeting law? I'm not sure I understand what she's talking about.
I don't, I don't either, um, the one time I can think of is when Lynne and I were in discussion about something that's now a potential rule, she said, are you going to make a motion? And I said, I think I am, it's being a total new one, how I even do it, and she said, then I suggest you do it in writing, so I wrote it up, got it to the clerk, who fine-tuned it a little bit, so people could see in writing what I was gonna otherwise be saying verbally, um, so that's what I'm thinking this refers to, that if you know you're coming in with something, try, it's, it's clearly always around something we're discussing, it's not a new issue, but, you know, you've read a report, but I don't, I'm looking at what she said, I don't think we need to do, say that here, um, right?
I mean, it feels like maybe part of what she, she's not here, part of what she might be trying to get at is beyond her town meeting experiences, where we did have very specific rules of, don't make a motion on the floor unless you hand it out, so she might be thinking partly about that, but for our reality, I think what she's probably trying to encourage is exactly what you did, Kathy, you went to her and you said, I'm thinking of making a mo, or to the president, and said, I'm thinking of making a motion, what's the best way to do that, and you get advice, as opposed to this saying, this is what rule is, and so I, if we need to add a rule someplace that says, if you ever wanna make a motion, feel free to ask for advice, you'll get some, but I don't necessarily feel like we have to say that, but I can appreciate the concept of encouraging people to ask for advice ahead of time.
Okay, so then I suggest we, since there were no other comments, we move on to rule eight.
There was something in seven six, Margaret had a comment on.
Right, it's still in.
She had a comment, so should we discuss that?
Oh, right, yeah, I got completely lost on that timeline situation, so I was gonna, I went, ask Mandy Jo.
So motions to rescind or to amend something previously adopted have no timeline in Roberts' rules, um, so they can be made, they have to be made on something that was adopted, you can't rescind something that you didn't pass, um, a motion for reconsideration is essentially to reconsider either, something that goes either way, um, and that has strict timelines, we put this in here because we changed what the vote requirement would be, otherwise it would just be garnered, governed by Roberts' rules, um, so we just amended what Roberts' rules requires for the vote quantum, so that's why it's in here, it never has a timeline, um, I, I, it's, it's completely independent from motions for reconsideration, because it's a, it's a different thing, it's not reopening the debate per se, it's saying, we passed something and now I just wanna rescind it, so you're, I mean, it's similar, but it's different, and it doesn't, it doesn't have that timeline of, let's, that day of, or the next meeting, it, it can happen at any time, so for example, um, when we didn't know what Chutesberry was gonna do with the assessment method, a motion to reconsider our vote on the assessment method would have been out of order, because it had been too many days, but we passed that assessment method, we could have moved to rescind it at any time, and rescission doesn't need to be by the person who voted in favor of it that last time, it could be by any of them, I think, there's not a...
So my suggestion is that...
So I would just not change it.
So I would leave it this way, but I think since she's also, Margaret, our clerk, has been very carefully alerting us, if we can or can't do something, that you, Mandy, go and talk that rationale through explaining what this wording means. We're on rule eight.
Eight, and the only comments on rule eight are eight point two A, do we want the word shall for specifying a time period, might we use may, are there times when a time period is not necessary, so, that was sort, Margaret's sort of doing that too, um, and then eight point two D and E, which is referrals for town manager appointments and bylaws, these are essential, keep them in, those were the only comments on rule eight.
So then let's go back up to, so we're in eight, and eight is so beautifully clean, until we get to eight point two, and then it's, then I got confused, and I said, in my note, does not scan as rewritten, is she trying to say, any and every measure of any kind has to automatically go to a committee? I, I got lost in her rewording there, um, what she was trying to accomplish, because not every single measure needs to be referred, but yet she said the workflow should be through the council.
I don't think her edits, I would reject, I would reject her edits.
Let's just be...
I think she wanted any measure to go through a committee no matter what, and that was the change to shall.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we should, we might consider some ourselves, or we might be a committee of the whole.
Right.
Frankly, there are proclamations that are considered measures, that don't necessarily need to go through a committee.
So, reject.
She, she's inserted the words the town manager, and, um, I don't think...
That might be useful, instead of a specific committee.
Or body, that, that's okay with me, I mean...
Does that sound like something you, you'd might wanna do?
Yeah, so it says may, or, and refer, and includes town manager. Yeah, absolutely.
So as long as it says may, and then we're not saying every measure, then it just gives us more flexibility, and it might as well be said, rather, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna yell at you if you did it, but, yeah.
I've made that change.
Yeah, and I think the comment I read on eight point two A actually referred to B, do we want the word shall for specifying a time period, might we use may, are there times when a time period is not necessary, so that was, I think, in reference to eight point two B, not A, a council committee shall report back, so, within forty-five days.
I, the only thing I'm, I'm just thinking about, one, for example, the speed law thing, you know, I'm, it was referred to CRC, but in terms of priority issues, and in terms of them working with TAC on it, that forty-five days just might not work, so, I'm concerned.
What we had discussed was, when we put that in, is the report back could be, we're still working on it.
Exactly. It, it, it's, so it's not just an avoid forever, it's that at least at forty-five days, you have to say something.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say, it's, the intention is just a check-in point, it's still on the agenda, yeah.
And so I still want eight point two A, which we altered to keep saying may, but also add the town manager.
Yeah.
I want the second sentence where it says, shall specify a time period for a committee to work back, I want that to stay, and... I want that to stay, and it's fine with me if, as a council, we say, "We don't care when that time period is," or "that time period is 30 days," or "it's 85 days." But not saying it means that we might forget to say it. So I think it's important to say something, but it could be completely open-ended.
The only change in A now is adding...
It needs report back, and all it says is, "We're making progress," or "we haven't dealt with..." That's fine, leave it at 45.
So the only change in A is to add the word "the town manager." There's no change in B.
Correct.
Now we're on C.
And, yeah, I don't know what that, reference to the printing of the annual reports.
I think that came from some other rule, from another town.
It did, it was like...
Oh, we stole it from somewhere else?
Yeah, it, it really was. Can we just get, you just, gone?
Sure.
Because then we, then it gets removed out of 8.6 as well. It's the exact same phrase that we just bor, borrowed helpfully from somewhere else, so we don't need it. Cool. We like the easy ones.
Can I just raise an interesting issue? We had a, and I don't think it's gonna refer, I don't think this is going to only occur once. The president, I mean, the town manager is ordered to find, to file his budget on May 1st. By this rule, it's automatically referred. That meant that the finance committee had to come back to the town council by, by May 30th because of their other rule that says they have to come back by May 30th. This year, because we didn't happen to have this rule, and we didn't have a vote to automatically refer the budget, we had to take the vote on the 6th, which fortunately gave the finance committee until the June 3rd meeting to come back to the council. It's, and because of the month of May always having 31 days, it's always going to be an interesting thing. And, you know, it's just one of those quirky little calendar items.
Because the 30 days is specified in the charter.
The finance committee has to report back on the budget within 30 days of referral. So it's a report back, it's not, the council then has to vote. That reporting theory can maybe be distributed...
Yeah. Our language, as we've written it, is on May 1st, it would have been in the finance committee's hands, and then the 30 days would have been the end of May, but because we waited till it got to the first council meeting, and then the clock started ticking on May 6th, not on May 1st, correct Lynn? So...
That's correct. And it, and you know, to be honest, it gave the town manager the opportunity to give us a brief presentation, which I thought was a good way to count, if you will, to kickoff budget season. I know the press wanted to know when I got here that night whether he was going to do that. So I don't know whether you want to deal with this separately, or how you want to deal with it, but I think we should do something.
I actually would, I would be, do we, this is, is this required in the charter, the automatic, Mandy?
No, we're just trying to offic, make things efficient. It's required to be referred to the finance committee, but it's not required to be automatically referred.
And I have no problem with the automatic. I'm just pointing out one little quirky calendar issue.
Yeah, so what we could do is every year, we vote to refer the budget itself to the committee, and so we would pull that out of C, all measures, and then the parentheses, instead of saying, "except for printing of the annual reports," says, "except for the annual budget."
I like that.
Oh wait, oh wait, am I just removing the word automatically from this? What, what am I doing to change that?
No, we would, we would have, "all measures authorizing a loan, comma, the levying of a tax, comma, or the expenditure of money, except for the annual budget, comma, shall be automatically referred to the finance committee," so that the council always has to vote on the referral of the budget so that we control the 30-day timeline on the budget, since it has to be submitted to the council by May 1. Sometimes that might be submitted April 27th.
No, that's a great change.
I thought so, too, until I reread this section of the charter, so top me down, Mandy Jo. 5.5, action on the budget. Immediately upon its receipt of the proposed budget, which would be May 1st, the town council shall refer the budget to the town council's finance committee. That's the word out of the charter.
So I was thinking that we were being driven by the charter here.
It doesn't say, "Wait till whenever your meeting is." It says, "Immediately shall refer." I would argue that's already an automatic referral that we didn't even ask for.
And then what the rest of it says, that the finance committee shall report back in 30 days. But what happens when there isn't a meeting at 30 days? I mean, I'll be honest with you, that would have meant that in order to meet the 30-day law, we would either have the report from the finance committee on the 20th of May, or we would have to call a special meeting by the 30th of May. It's, this, this is already, I don't have to tell you all. I mean, it's, we're meeting twice a week for up to three hours each time, just to get the budget done.
Yeah, I, I think this ties, the way it's written, I feel like it ties our hands in the charter. It says, "Immediately upon receipt, refers, and then 30 days within that referral." And so I think that we, I don't think we did have that option this year. I think we didn't follow what the charter said. Now, I don't think that's a problem, but...
So I think it's, depends on what, what is a vote to refer, and what does refer mean. Immediately, it's at the first meeting after we received, we voted to refer, because if you don't vote, unless you've got a rule that says it's referred, some, somehow it needs a vote.
Arguably, it could also be that there's no vote here. It's that the town council shall refer, that there doesn't need, this arguably could be interpreted to say that no vote is required to refer, that it just happens magically, which thus causes us the problems of 30 days of referral.
So I think, yeah, so maybe we don't exempt it, and the finance committee might logically talk to the finance committee in Northampton and East Hampton about what they do. I don't think the 30 days was something we made up as a charter commission. I think it was generally in charters. And so see how they handle review of the budget. We've been doing it as our old finance committee does, which is, which was under a different system. Maybe in cities, the finance committee does some other type of review that's not like we're trying to get done this year. And it might be logical to talk to their finance committees to see how they do that review in 30 days.
Got it, so we're leaving this language, recognizing we likely have a logistical challenge, and trying to figure out how we can somehow juggle the two sections of the charter that have the, goes right away, and reporting back in 30 days without it having scrunching. Yep. And I could, yep. You know, in a, once we understand what we're doing under this whole new, you know, even with the review, if we have from the town manager, I'm giving it to you on May 1st, we could have, we had already this year. Every meeting was already organized with a notion of when the report back is. And the report back, since the council doesn't have to vote on it till the end of June, can still be the first major consideration, is that a June meeting? You know, we, we just have to go, what you're just saying is, there's no way that there'll be a formal report back?
Can report back be construed as the recommendation has been made available to the council, but not necessarily at a meeting?
No, the charter says, review, thoroughly review and make a presentation and recommendation within 30 days. So I think the recommendation is in a report. If the report includes, I mean, how do you interpret presentation? That could be... Charter commissions doesn't always think things through, um, but...
Yeah, that, 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 that one I really got it.
I would absolutely agree, recommendation can be in paper form, not at a meeting. I mean, and this doesn't say at a meeting, even if you see presentation, it doesn't say at a meeting. A report might be able to be interpreted as a presentation if it's descriptive enough.
Okay, so I have my notes. I'm gonna ask Northampton, and I have to say, when I first picked this up and was thinking, hmm, if I get elected, I want to be on finance, and I looked at it, and I said, "Holy mackerel." I have little things, really short timeline. So, moving on.
So we have identified a flaw that we can't fix via rules, so.
So the only comment on Rule 9, I think there's only one, is 9.5. Doesn't seem to include authorization of borrowing, which I think Margaret caught, too. So I think she added something in about borrowing authorization. That is the only...
Where was?
Rule 9, it's, it's on page 24, I think.
Oh, it's in a different section.
It's on my 24. It's in like, "Items requiring at least two-thirds of councilors present and voting to vote in favor," is where Margaret added it, borrowing authorization.
She's already or...
She's already caught that one that was a comment from the counselor, and that was the only Rule 9 comment from a counselor.
Okay. Has a comment. Under 9.2, she wanted to know what "under certain cert conditions" might mean.
That was the wave, the reading.
Can we, can we leave it vague enough that we, there, what, what those conditions might be?
Those conditions are set forth in Charter Section 2.10.
Okay, so I'm happy, you know, I'm happy not explaining all of this here if, if that, if that is literally in Charter.
Why don't you refer to the section of the charter?
We do.
We do.
We did, it's actually not in there. Any proposed bylaw shall be published, no, um...
It's actually not what I thought it was when I looked at it.
It is not, yeah. Prior to final passage, each proposed, oh, bylaw shall be read at two separate council meetings, except as provided in 210B. So that's the non-emergency, so 210B says you don't have to read it at two meetings.
So it's just...
Do we just delete that section?
So just del, do I just delete, "Reading may be waived under certain conditions"? Do I, am I deleting that sentence?
Just delete that sentence?
Okay.
The "Reading may be waived" sentence?
Yeah.
Because really, it's just talking about emergencies. It isn't like I've read in some other communities where they say, "If this, if this, if this."
Right, and we, we created the long ones. If it's really long, you can...
Yeah, where does it say that? Because that's what I was looking for.
That was in, that might be in 10?
That's exactly what I was looking for.
Is that in 10?
Is that we said if it was super long, we didn't have to read it out?
No, that's in measures and bylaws, so that's, that's, that's in this 8, Rule 8, somewhere.
So we've got 10 minutes left.
Ah, the discussion need not include the specific language of the measure to be voted, but shall include the substance of the measure. Is that kind of where we hope we covered that?
I think it's 8.3. I don't know, there's something in Rule 8 somewhere.
Oh yes, 8.3C. In order to expedite deliberations, may waive the reading of the proposed bylaw, provided that a brief summary shall be provided, and read by the town manager, a counselor, or by the bylaw sponsor. So if it's 20 pages long, they can read a, a two paragraph thing instead.
So, so instead of referring to the Charter section, so in 9...
Yes.
So in 9, the Charter Section 210A reference should be before the reading sentence, and then after, so it should be after the first sentence of that line. And then, "Reading may be waived under certain conditions," should be Rule 8 point, was it 2? 8.3C, 8.3C.
8.3C.
We're just creating our own waiver on reading.
Exactly. That's where we did, that's why I got confused when I went back to the charter. I'm like, "But it's not in here," because the emergency stuff is what's in the charter. Right. So the charter reference goes between the two sentences, and the rules reference gets added at the end of the second sentence.
I guess the reading is technically reading the change, like, not just considering it. It is an actual reading of the thing.
Well, I have, "The council must read a proposed blah, 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 blah," and then the charter reference. "Readings may be waived under certain circumstances," period. See Rule 8.3C.
Yes, exactly. So the borrowing thing got picked up.
Margaret caught the borrowing.
And I'm just accept, well, I'm leaving it as a track, but everything is fine as is, okay.
It needs a period after MGL Chapter 44, multiple sections, just for consistency.
Are we at 10?
I think we're ready to move to 10. I was just glancing over the council comments again, but I think we are indeed ready for 10.
Fortunately, 10 had a lot.
Yeah, unfortunately. Do you want to...
Can I take them just by rule? 10-1?
Yeah.
10-1, "Agree that committees should take no action that is binding to the council without the whole council being able to vote on it. Committees should not make policy on their own. Option for committee charges to govern opens way for manipulation and sophistry. Keep it simple." Another one said, "I strongly prefer option 2. A liberal interpretation, interpretation of option 1 could grind some committee deliberations to a halt or unnecessarily slow them. It also is less efficient as it consumes more time of the full coun, council for things that can be handled at the committee level. It makes more sense for charges to be very specific about what committees can do. And it makes sense that committees should be able to delegate work to subcommittees, which is a more logical term than work groups." So that must be a different, sorry, that's a different rule. Never mind, I'll get to that one later.
And we've, we since changed this, "Council committees shall take no action that would bind the council," period. We put that in, people didn't see that before, and that was, so one of the comments suggested that. It actually went further and said, "Without the council first voting," or something, but I think...
So, just to be clear, and I know we had this conversation on the 6th, though to be clear, when we say, "Take no action that would bind the council," does that mean that as currently formulated, OCA bringing a certain set of appointments to the council has already bound the council? Okay, good, because it's, because it's subject to a final council decision. Okay, cool, absolutely. Sure, we're clear on that?
Right.
Bind means what?
And when we, when we talked about this at the last meeting, I had suggested that the sentence be, "Council committees shall be advisory and take no action that would bind the council." And I think two of us thought that was good, and two didn't, and Shalini wasn't here. So that was just like, an additional two words.
Right, so just so Shalini understands, if you're looking at the wording here, it says, "Council committees shall take no action that would bind the council." We agreed on that, but we were two to two on having more, two more words. "Council committees shall be advisory and take no action that would be, would bind the council." So we didn't put "shall be advisory" in. So the, you know, we're coming back to the full council now with an amended of the amendment, so we should decide whether we like this wording or we want the other wording.
With adding "be advisory."
Shall be advisory and take no action that would bind the council. She, she doesn't like being put in the hot seat here. I'm returning to you just on a, you weren't here to participate in this decision.
We actually said, "Let's wait until next week when Shalini will be here."
What does advisory mean?
I like it the way it is right now.
Okay.
But, I mean, I haven't heard the full arguments, what was, I might be missing something. I don't know if you want to go there, or we just want to move on. I like this, I, I did see this, and I like the addition that would not bind the council.
I...
I'm just a little bit afraid that people won't understand exactly what that means, what an action is and what binding the council is. You know, it's kind of like archaic language. And so I think advisory is more clear, and it says more what's in A and B, or in option 1. And so it would just underline that committees bring recommendations, and then the council acts on them. and then the council acts on them.
When we say it's capturing more of A and B, you mean the A and B that have been deleted? Because we replaced all that with, we replaced the options we previously offered with a new phrase about no action.
Right, right.
Okay.
Given that you had... I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Given that there were so many suggestions on this, and you rewrote it completely, I would even consider going back with the rewrite the way you have it, and then the rewrite with the advisory and. In other words, do some councilors think that's, should be in there or not be there? I like the rewrite. I really do. I think it's much clearer. But I'm just wondering if you want to give the council that.
So, you see...
I don't think we've given them any other options up until this point. I think everything else we've resolved up to this point. And so, I'm more comfortable with going ahead and choosing one and saying this is what... I understand entirely what you're saying. But given that we don't have a bunch of those Option 1, Option 2 situations this time, I think up until this point, we have resolved everything today. Maybe not to everyone's satisfaction, but we've come to something that we can agree on presenting. So, I'm uneasy with presenting, calling this one out separately.
Well, can I ask for a straw vote then? Because I would prefer adding shall be advisory and take no action. So, I would add those words. And we could do a raising of hands. And, you know, just to get a sentiment, how much does, how much clearer? To me, that makes it even clearer. It doesn't change it. It just makes it even clearer. So, I would propose adding the words shall be advisory and take no action that would bind the council.
What was the argument for not having the word advisory?
Alyssa, I think, well, I can't speak. You know, to me, to me, it means, what the meaning to me is when you say can't bind the council, is that they're advising the council, and the council's taking the action that's going to bind it. So, they shouldn't go out and promote a certain way of doing things till we vote it. So, it makes it very clear that we're sending things to them and asking for a report back before we take an action.
Yeah. I just wanted to hear what was the argument for not having the word advisory.
Okay, so what is the argument for not wording those words?
I'm trying to direct my brain. I think some of it was that not everything a committee does is advisory, but that doesn't mean it binds the council. If you take GOL, for example, we simply declare something actionable or not. That's not really advisory. That's not saying yes or no on adopting. It's just saying this is clear, this is not. You know, there's potentially stuff in the OCA committee on the outreach side and communications side that doesn't really, isn't really an action for the council because they're working on outreach. You know, and how are we going to outreach? That might not be an, you know, they might decide, "We're going to try this." That's not really binding the council to any particular decision, but it is making a decision. It's not an advisory action if they're going to say, "Hey, we're going to do this thing for district meetings," or "We're going to create this calendar." That's not an action that binds the council to having to act or not act, but it is something that is not advisory that a committee is doing. So, that's, I think, some of the arguments is there are things committees do that aren't necessarily just to advise the council as a whole. They have some other duties. And so, putting those words in might restrict that too.
So, Mandy, you think by shall be advisory means that they can't act at all? Is that the way you're doing, like even on, you know, because I think the actions you're talking about don't bind us in any way. If they're trying different ways of doing, you know, of doing outreach, they're experimenting with, "Does this work? Does that work?" I don't think it binds us in any way.
I agree that it doesn't bind, but it's also not advisory.
Right.
And so, when you add council committees shall be advisory, they're doing things that aren't advisory either. And so, where does that fit into that sentence when those words are added?
I'm, I can't have a strong view on this, other than I don't want the committees to bind us. So, that's the most important thing for me.
That's the clear...
Darcy? I'm just looking at Darcy.
I liked Lynn's idea of just asking the council, the full council. And I do think this is probably the most important rule that we're deciding on, so... And we're kind of deciding whether it should be good or better. Because they're both, you know, they're both saying similar things. One is just stronger than the other as far as making it clear. So...
So, we, this is going back from May 20th.
That is correct.
The adoption of it.
That is correct.
And then the adoption of it isn't, doesn't have to be till June 3rd. So, if this were the only place in the document where we said, "We have Choice A or B," it would be easy to talk about it on May 20th, and then to quickly go through other changes we've made that were responsive. So, I would make a motion to have one choice in this document, which would be this. And just these two. This one as is, as an A, and we go Choice 1 or Choice 2. I'm making a motion, yes.
I second that motion.
I just, this meeting's been long. Did we leave the deliberate, the clapping one?
Then I want the clapping back. I mean, as a choice.
No, we didn't make, we didn't.
We didn't.
She, Alyssa, Alyssa moved to remove it.
She conceded because she thought we weren't providing options in this document. If we're going back to providing options, then we're going to have a different conversation. I am really, really think we all agree that it's true, that the statement that's there now, council committees shall take no action that would bind the council, is true and accurate. If adding the word advisory will prevent us from having to provide options to the council, then I would actually concede that as well because we have taken more than 10 minutes to argue about this amongst ourselves, and we aren't still 100% certain what advisory adds to the sentence. 13 will not have that easy of an option figuring that out either. So, let's give them what we think makes sense and be done with it.
Okay, then I, I'll back off my motion. But here's a suggestion. When this is presented, can, and we get to this, that we changed the earlier, and here's our new language, that there was a discussion on whether we should add shall be advisory, and we'd like a sense. So, not put it in the document, but just have the presenter, I E. Alyssa, make that comment so that people can pause and think about this.
Right. Does the word, yes.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion.
So, right now, the way it looks though, and with that added concept during the report that I just wrote during the report, is that it's going to read, "Council committees shall take no action," and the track changes will show that the, both options have been removed because we no longer need any of that language because this now substitutes.
That's correct. That's, if you look at it, it's simple. That's the way it reads right now.
And then the other question I have is just above that where Margaret made a suggestion. I disagree with her suggestion based on conversations we've had at this very body. She said, we said domains, which I know was kind of a funky way to put it, but she says approved charges. And I thought this committee said that there might be some things that these committees perceive to be within their bailiwick.
I want to reject her change.
Yeah, I want to reject that change. Are we good with that? In 10.1, in the introductory paragraph. Great, so that was easy. Reject the change. Because we actually were leaving it open on purpose.
Are we down to 10.2 now? There were two comments on 10.2. If we're done with 10.1. The first one is prefer, 10.23. I guess we had numbers at some point. Prefer Option 2, President ex officio of all committees, but without authority to make motions or vote. Other councilors may participate as members of the public. The president oversees all committees. So, I guess that's just someone prefers that option. And then someone else said, "I believe the current system has been working fine and worry about the increased power assigned to a president if given ex officio membership to every committee. Prefer Option 1."
What we did last time is we did go down, back to Option 1 because we took a vote, and we decided that the vote would rule. So, we have already addressed. One person would have liked it the way, the alternative, but I think we made that decision. So, I think in the clean version, we only have, you know, we don't have anything about ex officio at all. That's gone.
About oversee?
We put up...
We put that up at the front, yes.
We went back and said the word oversee. Let's bring it back up and say, "One of the things the president does is oversee." And we added it back to the president's duties. So, I think we're moving then to...
I got comments on 10.5, but I think Margaret had something on 10.4.
So, I think what Margaret's trying to get at is as opposed to the work groups where we might include staff, that ad hoc committees directly are councilors, but then they shouldn't be counselor members. They are councilors. There is no such thing as council members.
But as we've seen with FinCom, you could put residents that are non, you could put non-counselors on council committees, and it's just the president appoints those.
I think she's asking us if we want to limit it.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure we do.
Are we on 10.4 right now?
Yes.
I would not change of council members.
So, let's just leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Reject or change.
Right, because actually, at the meeting we had this weekend, TAC has some subcommittees or ad hoc committees where they deliberately pulled residents on them. You know, so it wasn't...
We may want residents on ad hocs, exactly.
So, that brings us to the work groups. And I will just read two comments on this one. "I'm confused by the statement work groups," a statement, quote, "work groups are usually subject to open meeting law," end quote. "Are they not always subject to open meeting law?" Someone else said, "It makes sense that committees should be able to delegate work to subcommittees, which is a more logical term than, quote, 'work groups.' Subcommittees must comply with open meeting law. The work of the council should not be shared with people who are not elected except as specifically authorized by the council. The authority should not be delegated to a commit..." That authority should not be delegated to a committee.
Just, and that, I read that comment, and I wasn't sure, you know, in terms of, since this is my first time on a town council. I know from these other committees in town that they can go ahead and create a subcommittee or a work group that doesn't have officially appointed people in it. You know, it's, they're going after one particular thing that they're doing. So, could we as a legislative body not allow our committees to do that? I mean, can't we be permissive here? I don't see that we would be more restricted just because we were elected. And I think particularly of a committee like CRC, they might, you might well want to say, "We need," you know, housing policies come to us. "We need to convene a subgroup with some other people on it to think this through, and then bring it back to..." We're not delegating our authority. We're just asking for more study. And then they bring it back, and it's still going through the committee, which is only councilors.
So, I think some thought would be if you've got a housing policy, and you don't feel you're expert enough to figure out the implications of a housing policy, that you use the town committees that exist that are expert in housing policy to figure out the implications on housing of that, and that you would use maybe the TAC to figure out the implications of that proposed policy on transportation. If you, as a committee, don't think the committee is expert enough to do those things, and then the committee of the council is the place where it takes all of those opinions on that one policy potentially and says, "What is, how do we weigh those pros and cons on transportation, on this, on that, to make a recommendation to the council that may be the best thing to do instead of creating subcommittees with new residents, is to say, "Well, we have a town committee that knows how to interpret a policy and how it will implicate X. And so, let's ask them for their opinion on this policy, even if it wasn't originated from that committee." I think that's one thought process. And another is, "Well, we're not going to use our town committees. We're going to create our own subcommittees with our own residents" that aren't, that might have differing expertise.
When, when we did this, one of the things I was thinking of was the proposal that came to the town council of this super entity that's an analytic body. I don't think committees are always neutral. You know, they were set up to do affordable housing, or they were set up to promote whatever. If you wanted a small group to weigh the pros and cons and come back with you with how this might work, it would, could, a committee... Our subcommittee, our council committees might want to do that, to say, you know, "How can we go out and get more information on this?" And it might be a real crossover where we're pulling one from two or three different entities in town and a few from outside. So, that's all I read this as, that it was permissive. We didn't have to do these, but we could create a pretty eclectic group that we send out that are more neutral than the entities that normally bring those proposals to us might be.
So, my, and I don't necessarily have a problem. My intellectual option went to what Margaret asked, who appoints?
And so, I think we left that open on purpose.
Yeah.
Because that changes, if it's the chair of the committee appointing all of the members of the work group, that would potentially also skew to an opinion.
Well, that's why you leave it up to the, to the, you leave it up to the standing, I thought, what we said before was you, the standing or ad hoc council committee that's considering doing this is, "We need a work group to do all the things we just talked about. How will we pick those people? And this group might pick the work group by doing XYZ method, and this group might pick the works group by using ABC method." That we were not going to control that. We were going to see how it played out.
Does that contravene, and I have no idea what the answer to this is, the Charter, since it is a council committee creating this group, does it contravene the Charter that states that the president appoints all members of council committees ad hoc or standing? Since it is, in some sense, a subcommittee of a council committee, would it contravene that to not have the president appointing those work groups? And I don't know what the answer is, but I bring that up.
Go ahead, Lynn.
One of the things that I find confusing about this is that if we have a knotty issue, okay, that it should be something that's recognized by the full council, and that we could decide to create a study commission. And that's one issue. The second issue, and it may not fall within the purview of a committee, but it might fall within the purview of a committee, and I would still expect the committee to come to the full council before they start creating groups. That's number one. The second thing, and this comes, just comes from my conversations with both Paul and Margaret, and I don't, I'm not speaking for them, but I'm just saying that they, they both have expressed to me serious discomfort in having a combination of councilors and residents on committees. They feel like councilors walk into a committee, and we are, have more, we bring in a weight much more heavy and sought after than any other member in the group. And then when we speak, it is constantly clarifying that we do not speak for the council. And it's just an ongoing thing, a debate that we've been having. And we have created one of these committees, and we all went with it, and we'll wait and see how that goes. But it's an issue of, those two issues for me. If we really need as a committee to look at the speed limit, I would not expect CRC or TAC to create a subcommittee. I would expect them to come to us and say, "You referred this to us. This is what we'd like to do," and have them do it.
And I think that's exactly what we didn't talk about. I mean, we talked about it, and we said, "That's not what we want." We want these groups to be able to do that on their own. Because they're already studying the issue, because they want this on a very permanent term, not permanent basis, they don't want to have to go back to the council to get permission to assign one person who's already on that committee to go talk to somebody who's on the Housing Trust and a staff member about a particular issue. who's on the housing trust and a staff member about a particular issue. They don't want to have to come back. That, that was our goal.
That's not forming a committee, that's just going and talking to experts.
That's why we're calling it a work group.
I, I think that it was an attempt to, to establish something innovative and flexible, and, you know, giving the opportunity, especially to residents, of which we have like a wealth of smart people out there, to be able to, to use that, you know, to use that resource that we have, to be able to get some of the information that the different committees need, not in a political way, but just to be able to use all of the people that are interested in, in helping out with the new form of government.
And I don't disagree with that. What I disagree with, and I can wait till the council meeting and say this, and not delay this any longer, I disagree with committees just going out and creating other committees. Somebody comes back, some committee comes back, we have a recommendation, well, how did that form? Oh, well, it formed from this work group. Well, who the hell appointed them?
So if we, I'm looking at our wording, so, and I think we wouldn't actually want an ad hoc committee to do this, as I look at it. I think we're more likely to want one of our standing committees. If a standing committee decides they need, that they think we would benefit from a work group like this, they should come back to the council with the suggestion of creating, is that, is that the, you know, because it might not be at the council level we saw it first. And this is written under 10, which is all about committees. Way back in the council, we didn't say, the council can create a study group or can create a, a commission when it needs to. So this was our, the opportunity, the place we put, how do we pull in on all these town people that might know a lot, to bring to bear on a complicated issue? Where we're not ready to vote on it yet, but we want them to go out and come back with us.
So the more I think about this, the more I think we delete, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of deleting work groups completely. We have provided for, you know, if it's a study commission or a select committee, we've talked about those terms before, and we just said, standing ad hoc council town. If a council committee comes back with, you know, we need more experts to really investigate this matter that was referred to us, our recommendation is create a new committee to deal with that. That goes to the council, the council has all authority to create a town committee to deal with that. It can be an ad hoc committee, it doesn't have to be a standing committee, it would have to comply with open meeting law. We probably want committees dealing with gnarly issues to comply with open meeting law. And so maybe we have the ability in other sections to do what this does, but in a manner that is actually more transparent, because it comes through a full council meeting, instead of a subcommittee that might create something that may or may not be, because it's not clear, and that's one of Margaret's things, subject to open meeting law, that might go under the radar. How do people know that they can? Is it really an open process for applying to be on the work group or not? You know, all, we're leaving that up to, yeah, the more I think about this, the more I think just, in my opinion, delete five, 10.5.
Well, I think conceptually, we need something like this. So the, to me, what, what I was hearing is placing it, would you want an ad hoc committee of the council to set this up? Usually, the ad hoc committee was already set up to deal with something short term, you know, that it's, so it's more our standing committees, or the full council, either one, determines they need something like this. It's not the same as a committee. It is, you're being sent out, and, you know, over the next two months, and we want to report back on this particular set of issues. It feels very different than a committee, you know, which has a charge and a, it's, it is a work group, a study group, whatever you want to call it, that isn't the same. And then, I understand we're going to like, who picks who goes on it is an issue, you know, how do we get the right balance? But it is, you know, assessing a more complicated issue that might, could well not have any counselor on it, other than reporting back to the council. So I, I just don't know, you know, I think we've got two issues. It's, we've got, we've located only under committees rather than the whole council. And you might well want the whole council saying, yeah, we need it, we need a group like this. It's not just finance decided they needed it, or rules, rules will be gone, but...
And we base this on practices that other towns had.
Many towns had this. This wasn't a one-off. I mean, I can go back, I found it in a lot of towns, and I thought they were trying to say that, on our council, we don't necessarily have what we need. And sometimes we need to send it out with a comeback before we pick up what the policy should be, because we don't have enough information.
And my only issue is that I don't think a committee should do that. I think they should come to the council.
So that's what I'm saying, Lynn, that I think we've got it placed in the wrong place here, and we need to think of, a committee might decide, we think we all need this, and they come back, and they tell the council, I think we need one of these, and we, we authorize it. You know, we figure out what it looks like.
So, all that understood. My problem is logistics. This was always meant, these were always meant to comply with open meeting law, meaning if one person on a standing committee, so you're, you have a standing committee that decides it needs some expertise on something, they send one member of the standing committee, who is in fact, of course, a counselor, because that's who's on standing committees, and they send them off to meet with a staff person and a chair of another committee, and they say, go off and do something. That's actually not subject to open meeting law, because it's one counselor, and that's why it says, usually, subject to open meeting law. There is no rule under what we envisioned that it would have to be two counselors. It could very well have been one, who was sent off to talk with the president of the chamber and somebody else. And I appreciate what has been said about, well, you could just do that informally already, without calling it a work group, and maybe that's something we need to make sure is clear to our committees, because what, what's being proposed as, well, we could just change that, I think is completely unworkable. In that, I sit at a committee meeting, and we say, you know, we really need three people to get together and work on this for two weeks. Okay, so we'll go to the next council meeting, we'll write a charge, we'll revise that charge, GOL will look at that charge at some point, then we'll have to argue over who gets to appoint the members of that committee, and by that time, it's now two months later. And like, we haven't done any of the things we said we were going to do. So is it more that we feel like, because of the weird logistics as who appoints and all that, and authority given to the council versus to standing, or I would argue, ad hoc committee might very well have wanted to send a person officially off to some place to meet with other people? Do we just say, all of this is moot because we should all feel like we can do that now, and that we just need to be cautious, that if we're sending two members of a committee away, remember, don't screw up open meeting law? Is that a real bottom line?
Can I ask two things? OCA formed a subcommittee. Would that be considered a work group? Or is that something else completely? Because OCA's already got a subcommittee, where does that fall in this grouping? Because I think they had every right to form that subcommittee of OCA members.
We didn't include anybody else like that.
Right, yeah. So, subcommittees-
Subcommittees are-
-don't need a new rule, I don't think.
Right.
And what you're describing, GOL did, GOL in a meeting said, hey, have we talked to so-and-so, you know, select board members about public ways and their experiences? Hey, Mandy, go off and do that.
What if you needed to meet three times to do that, rather than to have one conversation?
I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion, just because we have another meeting starting at 2 o'clock, that is going to be a three-hour meeting. So just for some of us that even though you observed, I didn't need a bathroom break, I actually need water right now. So I think we've raised a series of concerns about this, in terms of what it exactly is and how it would function. So, we may, in the draft, this is, I'm thinking this through, in the draft that we're sending back for the council to look at, leave this yellow saying, this needs more work, we need to figure out how to write it, where to place it, a series of things have been, you know, something, just leave it, the only real yellow shaded. If we can't fix it right now, and we don't know where to put it, but we, rather than delete it or edit it, and then my next suggestion is, I don't, there were a series of things coming later, that wanted to give the president the appointment for J, appointing power for JCPC and BRG, not leave it this new way we proposed, didn't want liaisons to be chosen by a straw vote, had some alternatives, and we left it that liaisons will be, we'll figure out it later. So do we need to talk through all of those now, if we're willing to spend like, four more minutes on it? How do we do that? We need a draft for next Monday.
Right. In order to get to the draft point, I want to take work groups out and put it on the list of issues that GOL needs to address in the future. I'm unwilling to say, because we don't want them to vote on this, we don't want them to vote to accept it when we still have so many unanswered questions. So I think we can pull it out, and if we have to just put it on a separate page and say, this is really important to us, but this isn't part of these rules.
And can, Alyssa, can you copy and paste the entire wording on this to say-
Yeah, exactly.
-we didn't, we didn't say we don't want these, we just need them to figure out how to organize them? And I just, you know, when GOL does it, Mandy, I'd really like to be there, because I, I think this is essential for us to figure out a really nimble way of doing it, not to set up whole new committees.
Exactly, exactly what we were looking for.
And sometimes they're going to be two months, we don't want them to come back in two weeks. This is really go out and find out a lot more and come back with us. It is, and it's not quite a study commission, you know, it's not quite that big.
Yep, yep, really, really important to us. And so, yes, did we want to change anything on the JC, now that we've heard the input, right, we listened, we read, over the last couple days, the JCPC and BCG, did we want to change that? Because we had made a point of having a rule about that, and we got counselor comments that said, no, just have the president do it.
We skipped over 10.6. 10.6I needs to say 3.5A.
Okay.
Minutes shall comply with 3.5A, which I think takes care of the comment we received on that matter.
Yeah, that person was saying that Minutes content's already covered, well, that's not true. Minutes content is covered by those things plus our rules, yeah.
And then there was the, that was the only 10.6 comment, so...
Yep.
10.7 was the JCPC, someone said, president appoint.
Did anybody change their mind on that, having processed that theory?
No, didn't change.
I don't think anybody changed their mind on that. So thank you for your input, and we don't agree.
So, there's a 10.6J.
Yeah.
What does right and obligation to be creative mean? We left that highlighted anyway, so...
It won't be highlighted anymore in the new version. Nothing's going to be highlighted in the new version. So unless we want to change the wording now, in response to that comment, it's just going to have the highlight removed and be accepted.
Okay. And 10.7 actually had two comments that said, president appointment.
Yes.
Not just one.
Sorry, I was, if I misled on that.
So where am I? Get, get me quickly to it.
I just saw the second, so that was just me too.
We're up to 10.7.
Yeah, and just-
And there were two counselors who disagreed with our theory of having-
Right, no, that I know, but where is the, so that was, they disagreed, but we-
Right.
I said, so we're going to keep it.
But we haven't changed our minds.
But was there an edit here too?
No, the, the edit, well, we were just simply talking about, just above that in 10.6, we already fixed the reference in letter I, and then in letter J, we were just taking the yellow off, although we were cognizant of a counselor opinion that said, I don't know what that means.
Yellow will come off everything, yeah.
But they said, we don't know what it means, but we decided, we, we have decided by not deciding that we don't have any further way of elaborating on what they mean by that.
No, I had that. So I, we'd already fixed the reference, like, we hadn't ref, we, rule 3.5, right?
A, 3.5A.
Oh.
That's what Mandy Jo said, right, 3.5A. And J, we're just, even though we got the comment that they're not sure what that means, we're leaving the wording alone, or did somebody come up with a new way of phrasing it? If we didn't, we didn't.
My new way would be to just delete it, so...
I think it was important to some people at this table.
I'm not going to push that one, but that would be my way of taking care of that comment, would be to just delete the whole letter.
Do people still like it? Do people, if people still want it in there? I mean, I personally am completely agnostic on that particular statement, but if it's still important-
I think it sends a good message.
Leave it in.
So, I think I'm caught up.
So then we've got liaisons, and I think we dealt with both of those comments.
10.8, Margaret-
Oh, okay, so before we get to all of that, we're still in 10.6, because we last week added something in K that the council's never seen. So that will, they will see it as a track change.
Yes.
They did not ask for this, we came up with this last time, and so that will simply be a track change-
Yep.
-that they see versus 10.6. 10.7, we're not changing, thank you for your comment anyway. And then 10 point, now are we at 10.8?
10.8, which doesn't have any counselor comment.
But it does have a comment from Margaret.
Yes.
And, you know, we were trying to be clear there-
We can't vote the appointment, because it's not our appointment to make. We can just vote who to send to the manager to appoint. So I, I would refuse reject her-
Yes, yes, because what we're trying to say is, we're not voting that someone will appoint them by sending a memo, that they, we're saying, we're appointing them via some kind of vote we take at our meeting.
So our wording, we don't need to belabor, I'm just rejecting-
We would just reject, I would just reject her change.
And then the council-
Because we know what we mean.
So, I prefer her language.
But we're not voting to appoint, and her new language implies that we are the appointing authority. We're trying to work around the charter, in our language.
I think she did it to go, to make us the appointing authority, because that made it clearer to her.
So what is-
And that's why we worded it in this very odd way, to say we were voting on which counselors we wanted to recommend to the town. This still is acknowledging the legal, the charter wording. And I think this is entirely clear, I just, I really need to end.
Are we rejecting it or accepting it?
So I'm rejecting hers, because I think-
We're already clear.
It was belabeled, labor last time, that, it was argued that we can't be the appointing authority here, so we can't turn ourselves into, and we came up with this, it is odd wording.
It's odd, but we, but we like it. We like odd.
But 10, the comments on 10.9, I think we already dealt with the non-voting liaisons. One is, I didn't like drawing straws, president survey members, then make a decision, it has worked well so far, this allows the president to work towards balance and fairness overall. And the next comment was, there may be a reason why a counselor has special expertise that makes her the appropriate liaison for a particular multi-member body, there may be links between councils and committees, those factors should be considered in the designation of liaisons. But I think we took care of that with the change we did last week.
With the change we did that they wouldn't have seen.
Yes.
Because, right, except there's a typo in it. But other than that, I is good, I think. The council shall establish a procedure, and then we figure it out. And that just makes it clear.
We just have to fix the typo?
Yeah, we just have to fix the typo, accept that change that we made last week, not Margaret's change or anybody else's change, but our new change from last week, and show the council that we changed draw straws to establish a procedure. Does that make sense?
Margaret's change, are we going to accept that? If we do, we need to change, get rid of the word two.
No, stop. So, wait, which Margaret change?
In 10.9.
So we actually, in 10.9, we are not accepting Margaret's change, we are rejecting Margaret's change. That's unnecessarily restrictive in small rooms, and it's not appropriate to complain about. It was, it was, are not expected, so that's what people need to know. But it's, shall not, like, it's like ridiculous.
It's rejected.
It's rejected.
And I fixed the typo, it was a typo, the council shall establish a procedure for assigning liaisons that fairly distributes assignment.
Oh, that's what it was trying to say, that fairly.
I, I was typing really fast.
I can't believe how much you've incorporated, Kathy, you've done an amazing job.
Thanks.
You've done an amazing, amazing job. We got there.
Okay, yes, so the only things, more things I'm going to do to this document is remove all the yellows, which I haven't done yet, okay? And to the extent, when I read it in simple format, I find literally typos, like double words, where I'll fix those, otherwise, you'll see it tomorrow, and I'll signal to you all that there is a V8. Otherwise, you'll see it tomorrow and I'll signal to you all that there is a V8. It is V8, it's not the juice, but it is a V8.
Exactly.
Waiting for you eagerly.
And you, you feel, I, I'm amazed by what you've been able to incorporate, Kathy, and then what we get will be the thing that looks different from 5.6 to now, as opposed to all the interim changes.
I think I kept up because I was reading back, so people should look at it tomorrow, particularly, Mandy's been following the counselor comments and Alyssa's almost been editing along with us, just to make sure I caught everything. But we should have a draft by tomorrow.
Alyssa and Kathy, like you did last time, would be, would be useful if you highlight what you want on slides.
Yep. And today is Tuesday, so do you, is that Fri, by Friday morning?
Adjourned.
What time are we adjourned?
I moved to adjourned.
Thank you for all your work.